Everyone, the time is 6:09 and I'd like to call the SC-161 Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call please.
Here.
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 Here, and a quorum is present. The first item on the agenda, our audience comments, and we have Ms. Agnes Trapp. Welcome.
Thank you very much for your commitment to working for the Village of Flossmore and our students in SC-161. I just, I have these questions. I met with the Assistant Superintendent, she answered them, but I'm going to also tell you about what my concerns are. When you see the amount of 18 million and you asked her with the taxes, I know it's 18-plus. I asked her if the taxes would go up. I know I'm an old lady and I can say I'm old, but I'm the youngest person on my glass. So when I go back, I'm going to, you know, speak with my constituents and my friends, and we're going to see their main concern is make sure that the taxes don't go up. Elderly people are already on a limited budget, and the mayor is working, doing a very fine job. I can't speak for her, but I can, you know, I could see our village going in the right direction. But I just would like to know if, and there's no guarantees, I understand that, but just work together so we don't lose any quality people, because a lot of these elderly people are just hanging on by the thread. And when you see 18 million, you want, the first thing they say is, why wasn't it published? And, you know, why isn't there more things published? So maybe if you could put them in the Chronicle or just keep this open. A lot of elderly people over 70 are not computer literate or computer savvy, so if you could just print it in the Chronicle so they know. And does any, will any of these items go up? I forgot to ask this question and I apologize. Will there be a referendum for any of these, this money? No? Okay. I have, I have a concern, and she said it's a boilerplate, but a boilerplate on A1A Document 134-219, and it says, "Standard form of agreement between the owner and construction manager." It says, and I quote, "With the basis of payment for the cost of work plus a fee without a guaranteed maximum amount." Now, when you, when you're talking about contractors, you're thinking, oh my God, that's willy-nilly. So I asked her, would she ever consider putting cost plus 8% or cost plus 10%? But when you see this, and it's on A1A Document A134-219, it says, "The work plus a fee without a guaranteed maximum price." Nobody gives anybody a contractor without a fee. You just don't give them a carte blanche check. And she said it's a boilerplate, and she watches them very closely, and the Assistant Superintendent stated that the attorneys have gone over it. So I suggested, is there anything, it could be cost plus a percentage, because it's written twice in these documents. So please consider that, because we don't want any, we don't want any, and I know she says it's never happened, but there's always a first time, so I'd like you just to be considered, it just be cost in a percentage. And, no, we don't know the figure, we don't know what it's going to be, but when you say, "Without a guaranteed maximum price," you don't know what they're going to charge, and that scares me. So thank you very much for looking at that. I also asked about the number of out-of-district placement, and she said there's approximately 30, and they're severely special ed, and she said they can't be placed in the district. So are you keeping, I know you're keeping track, but, just keep track, because the out-of-district cost for 30 children is very costly. And then, I know I'm usually, today there's more people, and I thank you very much for that, but usually I'm the only person here. And then, I'm glad you opened things to the public, but just think of publishing things, whether you publish them in the Chronicle, I know they're online, but remember, you're elderly, elderly people are not computer literate to pick up your agenda. And then when I asked her about how many people that were selected before Pepper Construction was selected, she said she had about 15 and she interviewed four, and she thought that Pepper, and I don't mean to, am I misquoting you, am I doing okay?
I was right, before it was on Carlos, there were 15.
Okay, so, four was good, and she was, she was very pleased. And then, please understand, and I thank, and I thank Courtney, she's outstanding, for these packets, but it's nice to know that there's only one or two or three of us, and this is a very lengthy packet, and I asked her if I, if the packets could be, you know, readily available, and she said, "Go online." But she was nice enough to Xerox them for me. And this is very concerning when you read all these documents, and I know it says it's going to be in here till 2026, and I know you can't guarantee our taxes aren't going to go up, but just remember that you don't, you're not going to have any of the people in Flossmore vote for these 18 million. She said she's keeping it, that they don't need to vote for it. But there may become a time when it might have to be on a referendum, because people, you know, it's just changing times and money is different, and 18 million dollars without the people knowing, it's kind of scary. You want people to stay in Flossmore. You don't want them to read and find out that their tax bill's going to go up because 18 million dollars in bonds, and that they didn't even know about, because a lot of them aren't computer savvy. So please consider publishing it, or even sending a newsletter, even if you send it home third-class with, with your positive things you're doing, because people will like to see that, you know, Flossmore's getting a new water heater, they're doing this, they're doing the lockers, they're being refreshed, and people take ownership in their building, and Norma de Villa, and Hick, you know, Heather Hills, people would like to know if you could just send it out, even if it's third-class mail, just so people know what's going on, and stress upon the fact that you can't pop, you can't promise them their taxes won't go up, but you are very concerned about the fact that you are well aware of the taxes, and I thank you for listening to me. And I also want to thank the principals for making sure that they involve the parents, because the parents are essential, just like the administrators are essential. You want Flossmore to be, to be known as a community of educated people. They want to come here, and I thank you for that. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Ms. Trapp.
Thank you so much.
Just ask a question. Is, in light of the things that she brought up, I know that the administration is trying to make sure that all information is out there, that we're putting it out in multiple medias, but is it possible that maybe a lunch or gathering can be held with the people that she's representing or talking about, to just do a Q and A? Is that out of the realm?
I mean, it's something that, no, it's, I mean, something that we could bring back to community engagement and actually have a conversation about that. He just said, is there a possibility of a Q and A with a group of interested residents? And I just said that's something that we could possibly think about through our Community Engagement Committee. Yeah.
And a lot of these people with the weather being cold along the block, the cold weather for ice and snow.
Sure.
So if you put it in, even if you put it in a third-class mail, just so they'll be aware of what's going on, they will pick it up and read it, because they've got to realize a lot of these, and I'm the youngest one on the block, a lot of these, they don't go out in, from November, and limited because of ice, snow, cold weather. And thank you for the question.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's report.
Sure, change, one second, capture my notes.
Okay.
Well, hello everyone, thanks for joining us on a Tuesday instead of our normal Monday meeting because the school district was closed yesterday. I think today marked an unofficial rite of passage, as Scott got the boilers fired up because of the dropping temperatures. It's always a big time in a school district when we get those moving, so I know he and his team are really prepared to work over the next few weeks. We have temperature fluctuations and everything happening, but to prevent any major hiccups with our heating and cooling. Number of great events scheduled for this week, in case any of you or our viewers at home would like to join us. Tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM, we've got the Western Avenue School Literacy Night, and then on Thursday evening, Serena Hills is hosting their Hispanic Heritage Night with a tour of Latin America. I know the students and parents have worked really hard, and staff members have worked really hard on those events, and I'm really looking forward to joining them over the next few nights, and I'll bring a report back either in my weekly updates to the board or at our next meeting on, on those events. And then finally, if you go back to our last Board of Education meeting, I shared that we were conducting our various fire, safety, et cetera drills at our school, and really the practice paid off last Wednesday, and we had a student who accidentally activated our Blue Point Alert system at Western Avenue School. The alarm sent the school into a code-red lockdown. The Flossmore Police Department cleared the building per their protocols, and we communicated the situation to our families. I'm really grateful for the responsiveness of the Flossmore Police Department, the quick actions of our students and staff members, and the calm leadership of Mrs. Isabella and Mrs. Renko. We know that code-red drills are never pleasant, and we always plan to support students after the fact with additional social workers, staff on hand, just to make sure that no students or adults are in crisis. It's really good to know, though, that our schools are ready to respond effectively during a crisis, and really, we'll just continue to practice our protocols, review our procedures to make sure that our students and staff members are prepared in case of an emergency. That's the end of my report.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, the next item on the agenda, let's see, is the Community Engagement Committee report.
Could you speak a little louder?
Sure. The next item on the agenda is the Community Engagement Committee Report.
Sure. At our Community Engagement Committee meeting, we basically did a post-mortem on the back-to-school event, started reimagining what the Started reimagining what that could look like for next August with Stephanie Wright, who is our Community Engagement Manager, who's shared between us and the Village of Flossmore. Uh, Christina's also on the team and I believe Liz will be joining us in the future as well. We also started taking a look at, uh, the end of the, unbelievably, the end of school year event and what that looks like. It's hard to even say that out loud on October tenth, but in order to be prepared, we have to plan those. And we really kinda talked about what the intersection would be between the district and the district PTOs and what those events look like. So we're really excited about that. We've got a few meetings, uh, coming up, uh, to continue that work. And I think that's about it. Christina, would you add anything else?
It'll be next week?
Yes, it is next week.
Next, yeah.
So in short order, we'll be prepared for that.
And we'll address your topic.
We'll address your topic of potentially meeting with. We will address your topic of meeting with those individuals that you, uh, were speaking of, just the elderly in the community. We can bring that to the committee. You're welcome.
Okay, the next set of items are the discussion items and the first item is the long range, long-range plan, long-range facilities plan.
All right, we're gonna go through all four, one project, one, one PowerPoint. Okay. So let's just do this. Okay, uh, first off, the long-range facilities plan. And of course, it's not working, so you're trying to. Okay. On, the schedule of work has altered a bit since we brought in Pepper to have the conversation. The total scope of work has not changed from that original document that we talked about. But the schedule was really Scotty and I sitting down and trying to figure out what made sense to us, which is totally different than what makes sense to construction companies. So, um, Pepper went through all of this and instead of a four-year construction phase, they're proposing three. So that would cut down one year of escalation. It would enable us to bid more things together as packages. And basically all of this is, is trying to, A, get the work done in a, you know, expedited fashion and, and B, to keep the cost down. Um, so, um, next summer, we are looking at, and a lot of these things now you're gonna see coming up in the next items, which is why we're putting this all together. Because WOLD already has their proposal of fee structure in for a lot of these items. So, um, Flossmore Hills Heating Upgrade and Western Avenue Heating Upgrades, you're gonna find as one proposal from WOLD. Cause they, they'd be specking those, um, boilers and so on together. Um, the bell tower repairs is another. Now, this is one that kind of jumped out at us as we were going through Western Avenue over the summer. We started noticing that there's some significant masonry repair work that needs to be done on the bell tower. Um, we looked into just getting some quote and we were hoping it would come in at, you know, under twenty thousand dollars and we could just get it done. No such luck. Uh, it's, it's gonna be over fifty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars, so we're gonna put that into a bid packet. Um, the lockers at Western Avenue drastically need painting. We can, we can take care of that next summer as well as the gym floor needing to be replaced. We haven't seen these things yet. Um, we'll be bringing those to your attention. The exterior door replacements for the ones that need replacements, I believe the majority of, which school am I looking at? Western Avenue, Western Avenue is the worst and then some other doors and periodic places over, over the, the buildings that aren't closing properly. Um, lunch tables district-wide, and we will do that as a separate, they will be outside of Pepper and WOLD because we can handle that internally. Um, there are a couple of cooperatives, so have already done the bids work for us to get the best prices. So we're gonna be talking to a few cooperatives that have already bid lunch tables to try and get those done. So the work for next summer is looking at about two point two million dollars. Um, you know what's missing on that? Normandy Villa windows are missing on that. Hmm, all right, I messed up. I forgot to add Normandy Villa windows. They are also in there and you'll see them in, um, the WOLD bid packets or the fee structure as well. Um, all of the windows in this building, um, are old, very, very old. I believe this morning we determined that they are relics because they're older than me. Um, so they're, they're desperately need, um, the wind, the wind off the back field just comes right through those windows at this point. There is a hundred and ten thousand dollar, um, contingency in there for asbestos. Um, at this point, I think we have determined that there's only asbestos in the glue holding the sill down. Correct, Scotty? There is, we were afraid that there was asbestos in the glue holding the windows in, the sealants there, but it looks like they're clean. So I think that number is probably going to go down.
We still have more asbestos everywhere else, right? That.
We have, mostly we have some asbestos in this building.
Right, and I remember that. I didn't know if, and there was like one wing left, right?
Yes, back where the tech department is, that wing back there.
So, that tech, that wing and then all of the windows?
All of the glue under the window sills. So when they pull the windows out, they're, they will tent the window itself. They'll have machines within the building to keep account on what stuff is there. But they'll be pulling the windows out from the outside. The asbestos company will do that. And then they'll kind of like move down to the next room while the window company is putting the window in and then shift. That's kind of the idea that we're looking at right now, but it looks like the only thing there's asbestos is the glue on the sills. So that's not nearly as bad as we thought it was.
Fran, I was, I was trying to hold this question till you got done, but because Christina opened it, um, regarding Normandy Villa and the asbestos. So, and she, she, she's right. We've had a lot of discussions about where asbestos is in this building. And the impact that asbestos is having on either staff or anyone that's working here. And then secondly, the, the potential for what Normandy Villa could do, should we decide to do anything with a pre-K program, et cetera, and asbestos removal?
Sure. So, first of all, all of the asbestos in this building is encapsulated. So there's no threat to human life at all in this building at this point. But the second we start ripping things out, then it has to be removed properly. Um, we have done all of the building except for that hallway and part of the hallway that goes through the back of the fishbowl, that area there. Like where the gang toilets are, right? It's only about halfway there. Um, if we were to do any major renovation on that wing where the tech department is, yes, we're gonna need to abate the floors. So far as the rest of the building is concerned and where we have students when they come in and do testing and those kinds of things. And if we determine that we wanted to use this building, the areas that we're using currently have already been abated. So there's nothing there. The only part on those parts of the building where there is asbestos is what I'm talking about right now, just in the sills of the windows.
Okay, thank you. And so, from a long-range planning concept, if we were to decide to move forward with further usage of this building. We would definitely have an asbestos, uh, removal cost to consider.
Yes, for that last piece of the building.
And, but then the, and I'm kinda go dovetail where she was going, or I think where she was going. But the majority of the building is ready for usage of all, of all sorts.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, twenty twenty-five is the big year. Um, that would be Heather Hill Edition. You will also see Heather Hill Edition in the WOLD documents today for contract approval because we need to start designing what that looks like in February. That's gonna take quite a few months before we have it all done. You all need to get your input into it. We're gonna have to get, you know, input from the schools and the community and so on. Um, we wanna get that right. Um, what we're going to do with the space that is vacated and all of those questions still need to be, to, you know, remain to be determined. So we need to start design soon if we wanna get the Heather Hill Edition onto the street for bid come next fall. Okay.
Fran, so when you say we needed to start the design soon, so again, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to make sure I understand where we're going. So has the architect started the design or we need, what's, what does that sound like?
All we have are those very brief drawings that we talked about in the, and when we did the Long Range Planning Committee, those conceptual designs, you know, those concep, you know, those conceptual things. They have not started working on any of that. They won't until you approve them, they're moving forward.
When, when would that come to us?
It's in your packet today.
Okay, so, so today we'll actually be able to do that?
Yeah, you should, yeah. We're looking for approvals tonight, um, because they need to start work on all of these projects.
Copy.
Um, that includes also we will be doing, when we do Heather Hill Edition, since we're in the building, we're going to try and take care of that. Will be the first building to actually be done from tip to toe. So the roof will get done at the same time, the classroom refreshes will be done at that time, um, and the final playground over there will be done. Um, we will also then, in that summer, do the Flossmore Hills Classroom Refresh and the last playground there. So your last two playgrounds and will, those will be the two buildings to get classroom refreshed. At that point, Heather Hill will be complete, Flossmore Hills will be complete.
Okay.
And Serena and Western's playgrounds?
Western's playgrounds were still new, they were not in anything, and Serena's have all been replaced. Okay. Um, then we will also be looking that summer and probably closer into the fall. We, since we don't have as much constraint on work in this building, since people are here twelve months out of the year. We kind of, kind of push that as, you know, get the buildings done first. But we will also be looking at the roof on this building, um, the rooftop, there's some more rooftop units that need to be replaced. And, um, the lighting in this building. So that's twenty twenty-five. Then twenty twenty-six, we will finish up the classroom refreshes on the last three buildings as well as some heating upgrades at Serena Hills. And the final rooftop units at Parker Junior High that need to be replaced.
No, it's ahead of the game. Um, but I just saw on twenty, in twenty-six, uh, when we have Parker torn apart, where will we house?
Summer school.
Yeah.
Yeah. We already started talking about that a little bit. Um, the good news is you have all of your elementary schools air-conditioned. Western Avenue is probably be the safe bet. Actually, no, because they're gonna be the classroom refreshed too. So.
Flossmore.
Flossmore Hills.
It hasn't always been at Parker, summer school.
No, it used to be at Serena Hills because Serena was the only one that was air-conditioned. And now they're all air-conditioned. So we kind of have our, our, our pick and, and my guess would be then it would be Flossmore Hills. Awesome.
So, and again, I just, some of this is just stuff just hitting me as I'm thinking about it. Parker. I know we didn't really discuss, uh, playground in Parker, but in a, um, in a looksee at some of the things that are going on with, I think it was called Levitt, Levitt Park. Um, do, has any thought been given to, I noticed it didn't come to Long Range Planning Committee, but has any thought been given to trying to do something at Parker to give these children somewhere to go to, to play?
They don't have a recess period.
Uh, well, they, they, and I get that, but I'm just, just thinking out loud, I'm wondering if there's a place for them on campus that we could have them, where we could be supervised. And I don't necessarily answer right now. So.
You're asking two different questions though.
Yeah.
You're asking if we can install a playground, then you're asking if we can supervise it. Those are diametrically different.
Okay. So, and again, I'm thinking out loud.
Yeah.
This is, I'm trying to find potential, behind the sky, things to look at. And not necessarily for what we got going on, I'm not trying to add anything else to the schedule. Believe that. But more because it appears that a lot of, um, our students leave the campus and go to Levitt Park. And when they do that, it just seems as if some, some things, shenanigans sometimes take place. And I'm wondering if there's something that we could possibly do on our properties that can help to curtail, manage or any, in anything like that.
So I would say this dovetails with my conversations with the board about a village response. And I, I think it, your comments kinda stressed the importance and the urgency of, um, the municipal organizations coming together to talk about how we support our kids after school. I think the challenge becomes, I, you know, I've, I've been to Levitt Park probably eight times so far. Anywhere from two to eight kids, depending on the day. So we would have to, I mean, a playground's four hundred thousand. So, and then if we're talking about providing after-school supervision, then obviously there's a cost with that. So I think the board would just have to determine.
But we don't own that.
What we're trying to do.
We don't own that.
And then what, and then we could come up with plans for that. I don't know that I would recommend a playground.
That's how I was using the word playground really loosely, but yeah.
Sure.
We don't own Levitt. That's not our property.
I, I see your vision, right? Like I can see the need for a place or an, an avenue for children. But it is there, right? And they are utilizing a public park. We just unfortunately are not in charge of said public park. So, um, I think where I know talks have begun at the community engagement level is how do we bridge that gap with community partnerships? Um, in teaching and reinforce, and re-sharing expectations that we have with our students when they're in and around the community. And I think that's where that conversation needs to begin because i- instead of us incurring, um, a large amount of using our funding for adding a playground to a building in which, one, if there's a playground on our, on our property, then that bodes an, an avenue that I don't know that we need to get on. But we don't have the time in the day for the, the students even have recess there. So, having said that, I think the Community Engagement Committee is also looking to take on community partnerships, if that makes sense.
And thank you, again. I can't say this loud enough. I'm not trying to add anything else on to what we're already doing. However, I did wanna bring that possibility at least to this floor in terms of looking at something long-range.
Are there examples that we should look at?
I think what she just said, say was perfect. Again, it's a start. Um, but I'm open to anything that, again, addresses the need of our children. Um, and again, helps them to, to find a way to, to, uh, continue to bolster their experience as opposed to having to find out things that we could have done and we didn't do anything about it.
So, maybe it would be, I mean, there are a lot of things happening at Parker where kids get to enjoy and have different learning experiences and fun experiences on Parker's grounds. So like the science class going out to launch rockets, um, the, the field day type activities for the eighth graders. But a- any, there, there are a lot of teachers that use the outside space there. So there are opportunities to embed play and learning. And so maybe it would be good before we look for what we think we need is to hear, like, give Parker a chance to talk about some of the things that they're doing, or at least just to gather them. And there, because there's so many things, at least from when my three kids were there, that they engaged in outdoor activities, so.
I'm sensing this is after three o'clock.
Oh, this is for after three, oh, but after three o'clock, after the school day is over? That's what you're talking about?
If, if it's possible after school, yes. But again, I'm open to, for example, the things that you were just mentioning. I think a lot of those types of activities are not as, as widely used as possible. So I'd be open to that. I think we have a lot of unused space at Parker. I think that, that, again, what she was talking about, the after-school part. So, I, I'll, I'll try to summarize this one more time. So what I'm saying is this, in terms of the long-range planning and the presentation that she's giving, I'm a hundred percent on board with that. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that there's a possibility for us to go ahead and continue to, to flush out activities during school, after school, for Parker, on our Parker's ground.
Can we take this up at a future board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Okay, this would complete the long-range plan, uh, at the end of the summer of twenty twenty-six. This gives us a whole, I mean, we were planning on it being done summer of twenty twenty-seven originally. Um, so this gives us some flexibility. If something comes up that says this isn't gonna be possible to do in that timeframe, we'll, we'll have some room to work. Um, but right now, this is where Pepper feels very comfortable that we could get the work done in these three years. Okay. So, the estimates of the work there, 2024, about two point two, 2025, eight point three, 2026, six point one, for a total of work at sixteen point eight. Estimate on architect fees coming about one point four million. Estimates on the construction manager piece about four hundred thousand for a grand total of about eighteen point six million dollars for all projects. Originally, we had talked about nine million dollars worth of bonds and taking a larger chunk out of cash. I'm rethinking that. I'm actually going to recommend what Bob had put together, which was a thirteen million dollars on the bonds over a span of thirteen years as opposed to ten. Having more room on your cash side should you need it, because we'll still have it in bank, and using up the full two and a half million dollars in the life safety fund. After this round of work, we're going to cut back on that life safety levy, probably starting in this year. I'm still working on the tentative on it. Because the volume of work that we're seeing in the ten year life safety survey isn't nearly what it was. You're pretty well through it. As a matter of fact, we're having to do a lot of real head scratching and figuring out how we, we work things in order to get through the two and a half million dollars that we've got sitting in that life safety fund. So, we may be doing some adjustments to levy and not levying the full two cents, maybe just levying a penny in the life safety fund for the next ten years' projects.
I know we had talked about at the long range planning committee level, some of the projects would be able to be taken from that life safety.
So, everything that you've seen here includes two and a half million dollars worth of life safety work. Now, that life safety survey, we just went through it for the first time last week. You will be getting a copy of that at your next committee of the whole, where we'll start going through it. We are on schedule to have that completed and filed with the state board at the end of December, beginning of January. The items on there are not overwhelming. We've done so much work to the buildings and, and getting them into good shape that you're not looking at significant issues there anymore. It's a, you probably should put another strobe light over here for a fire alarm. You should prob, I mean, there's, there's a lot of small things. There's not a whole lot of real big ticket items left on that list. And that's, that's, you know, that, it's a test to this board for putting the money into, into the buildings and taking care of them. And that's what we like to see, that they are safe, that there's nothing there that's, that's going to be catastrophic in the future, that's going to bankrupt the district. They're in good shape. So, we're going to probably, I would probably recommend backing off on that levy a little bit. Okay?
On the two point five that you have, that's what you want to?
We're going to, you're going to use that two point five, that two point five we already have in the bank, we're going to use. Remember, the, the strategy was levy two cents every year for ten years, build up a fund balance and be able to use that fund balance when that ten year life sur, survey comes into play. And you only have one year to get the really important things done, to make sure that you had the cash in bank to pay for what had to be fixed immediately.
Okay.
Okay? You're still going to go with that same strategy. I'm just saying, I think you can pare back on how much you're saving up for. So that you wouldn't have two point five million, maybe you'd have one point five million dollars in there instead to use when they, what the, what they find. Okay?
So Fran, we got a, a bunch of questions from Mr. Darguzis today. And since we're voting on this tonight, can we just run through them?
Sure.
I know he's not here, but I think his first complaint was that the work, I guess, doesn't necessarily resemble what the long term planning committee set. My understanding is that the work we're looking at is less scope than what the long term planning committee set, correct?
Long term committee, I mean, we were talking at cafeteriums and everything else. We just simply don't have the bonding power to do that without referendum. And that would increase the property taxes. And I think this board's preference was to stay within our capacity at the, as it is right now under PTAL.
Okay.
Hold on, I'm, I'm make sure I understand what you just said. I was with you and then I think you're, you're using a time period when you make that statement?
Let, let me finish my series of questions, maybe. And then, and then if, if I haven't fixed that, anything, let me know. So, I, I, there was also like, when, when the initially, when the long term planning committee's recommendation came to us, like, there is some, some work at Western to be done, and we said no to that. That's what I, that's what I had in mind when I said less scope. Like, there were things we said no to.
Yes, the board said no to expanding the office space at Western Avenue.
And is, there's not anything substantial that's been added to that scope, right?
No.
Okay. And so, with respect to, he says in his email, scope creep has moved this up about five point, up to eighteen million instead of seventeen million. Our scope is narrower. It's just that the estimate of what it's going to cost has gone up, right?
Correct. I mean, construction costs have gone up significantly since COVID.
And even the estimate we have now, that's just our architect and constructions team's estimate. Since we have to bid this out publicly, we actually.
Correct. We're hoping it'll be coming in lower.
Yeah, weirdly, the people who've been on things read the meeting minutes and they somehow magically never come in lower than the best guess, but yeah. He asked a question, how will this eighteen million help our students get to great academic grade level achievements? Unless anyone disagrees with me, I think the answer is, it doesn't. This is boring work. It's super boring.
Well, we'll get classroom refreshes, so, I mean, the learning environment that they sit in on a day to day basis presumably won't be quite as glum.
Okay.
It won't be Dover White anymore.
I actually disagree with that. Maintaining a building in good working order is a direct impact on student performance. Because all you need is to have the experience where you have a building that's not in good working order and see the negative impact of that. So, I very much feel that the work that's being done is keeping the buildings in good working order. And that is definitely an impact on student performance.
Okay. Best building is one you don't have to think about, right?
Got it.
What's that?
Best building is one you don't have to think about, right?
There you go.
Yeah. All right, so he asked a question about, I think that was it, actually. Oh, he had a question. He sent me a separate email asking about cost plus contracting. I'm not nearly as familiar with construction contracting as Mr. Darguzis thinks I am. I understand he's got a philosophical objection to it. You know, I know that we went through effort to select an architect firm, a construction firm that we trust and has a long reputation of, you know, not going over budget. But that said, can you explain, do you understand what he means? I don't really understand what his issue is.
Some of this stuff is nuanced, to be honest with you, and it's a little beyond my as well, which is why we had our attorneys go through most of it. And the insurance company, our cooperatives also went through them on our behalf. My comfort level is, the reason that I have a comfort level with this is for this very reason. Remember when I tried to go apples to apples with all of the construction management firms? When I went, I, when, when we had the four construction, last four construction manager things? You're welcome. And I tried to compare their costs apple to apple. It took me a while to drill down on all of them. And it was a lot of back and forth on phone calls. It was a lot of back and forth on emails. It was really just trying to get to, here's my scenario, what is this essentially going to cost me? Well, none of them really saw, they saw the compilation numbers where they, you know, in total where they landed on that. But they didn't see my schedule of calculations behind.
Right.
You also have in here, and we got to Pepper's first pre-construction contract, their, their schedule of fees, what they're, want for the first, this first go around of work. Based on what they told me over the phone and in emails and my calculations and the first schedule of fees that they've given us, they are right there. As a matter of fact, they're lower than what I had estimated they would be based on what they told me.
Okay.
That's where my comfort level comes.
So, I know that you've been through all that, but, but some of our taxpayers and constituents didn't get to sit through all those meetings.
Sure.
Is it unreasonable to ask, to use the example that she gave earlier, about, you know, there's no cap on costs? I mean, is it, sometimes, I guess it's unreasonable to ask to throw some language in to make a group of citizens feel better?
So, the way, the way the contract is written, it's, depending on what your scope of work is, it's this percentage based on, on this percentage of work. The pre-construction is the number of hours for each different person that requires work. You know, they're the people who look into.
It's just the pre-construction that's not capped?
I'm sorry?
Is it just the pre-construction that's not capped?
The pre-construction is the only thing that is based on hourly costs. The construction management piece, when we actually get to work, is a percentage of the bid.
Okay. And then.
So, I believe where it comes into play is, it may look different for a ten thousand dollar project than for a ten million dollar project. And so, when you put a maximum in there, considering the complete scope of work has not been necessarily determined at the time of the writing.
Yeah.
If we put a cap on that, it may not, do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Absolutely. So, there may be, for the, use a ten thousand dollar project as an example. There may be circumstances where you and the rest of us ask Pepper to incur twenty thousand dollars of fees to sort out that ten thousand dollar project.
Correct. I'll, I'll give a, I'll give a real live example of something that happened in this building years ago. When we went to redo those parking lots out there, when they finished putting down the gravel and they drove a truck over it, expecting it was going to be fine, and it sunk six inches. That was an un, that was not anticipated, and that required a whole lot of work to rebid and redo and all of that, and it takes someone to do those, those things.
The planning work took a ton. The, what happened, what's the problem? But the actual repair didn't cost so much, right?
Uh, the actual repair was chunky. But, I mean, it, the fact of the matter was, we had to put a whole lot more rock in there and, and in order for basically cars not to sink.
But ultimately, I mean, that's the answer to those who are concerned.
But, I mean, it took a lot more engineers to get involved and figure out what the problem was and what we needed to do to resolve it.
So, those who are concerned about no cap, it's because that covers large to small. The key, though, is that we're not, we, we are not, if you ask Pepper to do twenty thousand dollars worth of work, you know you're asking them to do that, right?
Correct. Additionally, what the contract calls for is with every work that we do, there is a work order that we will be running by our attorneys and the board will be approving with every step of the way. So, right now, I've got you pre-construction for the 2024 work and for the different projects for WOLD. Like, you'll be seeing each piece of that along the way.
Okay. And ultimately, the budgets for all of this work, that's determined at bid time? These are just our best guesses?
Yeah, it'll be, the bid, it'll be determined at bid time, but it's going to be determined at bid time with each, each subcontractor. It'll be determined, that total work, what the construction management piece will be, and WOLD's fees are already there upfront as to what they anticipate that work will be.
Okay.
Which is really why we kind of like having Pepper on board, because it also keeps Pep, uh, WOLD in, in check as to what they think that total amount is going to be, the total amount, because they have a percentage on the total amount of work as well.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm sure I've missed some question that Joe would have liked me to ask, but I've done my best. So, at least he can tell me what I got wrong.
There you go.
Later.
You know, and, and Cam, I got a chance to work with Joe closely, and Chris heard a lot of these conversations in the, in the meetings. And one of the things that Joe was, was really asking about, and I actually agreed with him, was what's the basis for the decision that you're making as, in a whole, on which project you're selecting? And so, Joe's measure was like, where are you getting bang for your buck? So, if we, if we put seventeen million in classroom renovations, are we going to see the student achievement gap closed? I'm just using that as a really easy one to kind of grasp. So, when Joe was saying, okay, now we're about to spend eighteen million, he wants, he's like, okay, did, did the parameters by which the board approved these projects incorporate, think about, consider, you know, where the bang for the buck was coming from with students? Would you say that I'm accurate and accurate on that?
You, no, he did, he wanted to know how we were going to measure our, 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 our spending seventeen million dollars on, on all of the things that we were going to do. And, and what I think Dana has done a good job of is, it's hard to do that, but Michael just proved a really good point. Like, if you have classroom refreshers, that you're going to have a, a student who is more, maybe more comfortable learning, however you want to spin it. So, yes, he was, he wanted to know how we're going to measure our output of what we were doing. But there's no easy way to do that.
I, I get that part of his questions. It was some more technical questions he's, that I, I struggle with. And so, it was bang for the buck. I mean, these are the boring projects. If we want bang for the buck, we have to add zeros to our spend. We spent a hundred and twenty million dollars. We can probably improve.
And get you bang for the buck, if you're interested.
Yeah. You know, life safety projects, refreshing classrooms might. Michael's point, Michael, your point is well taken. And I don't, I don't, I mean, they're boring, especially to those who don't have kids in school. But, you know, I don't mean to say they're not important. It's just that I think the bang for the buck methodology makes more sense if you're spending, if you're not, you know, we have a menu of projects we'd like to do. It's much wider than what we have a budget for. So, when you're dealing at that small scale, that's not a useful analysis. If we had the whole menu available, a hundred million to spend, you know.
Yeah. And, and I think that having sat through all of this and being a part of it right now, that the thing that I'm trying not to have die is all those things that the long range committee worked on and making sure that some of those things in the future still get looked at. I know that this is a start point. I know what Joe was talking about, which is why I'm, I'm bringing that to, again, back to the floor so that we don't lose sight of, of, again, all the other things that would add up to a hundred million dollars. We can't get, we can't get them all done. We had to start somewhere. I know that this was a tough place to start because we were still trying to meet some of the demands of bang for the buck, which is why the classroom renovations are on there. I know we were trying to deal with some of the safety issues, which is why Heather's being done. I know we were trying to deal with the boil. So, I mean, I get why we got here, we had a limited amount of resources to get at. But again, I just want to really make sure that we all know that this is, this really shouldn't be the end, if anything.
No, I think we've, we've talked about that, maybe individually, that this should be like a ten year plan, right? Like, because everyone wants that cafeteria at Parker. Like, there's, that is a legit, every time I, you know, walk up there, I'm like, great, right here. So, no, it's in everybody's head. I just wish we had that blank check to cut that for us.
It, it would be helpful, though, if we're all, have the same piece of context. I think if we think about those additional plans, it was expansion at Western Avenue School, creating gang bathrooms there since they're limited. It was the cafeteria. There was probably some additional work here. I feel pretty safe saying that, that as we've heard from Ms. Chopp in the community, the impact of taxes can be a challenge. I don't know how that work gets done without going to the community to ask for that money. And so, as we think about what that looks like, we can, we can keep all of these in mind. The fact of the matter, though, is this will handle our, our bonding authority for the next thirteen years. If we wanted to do something in the interim, we would really need to think about the community's role in that. And I think that's where, that's where the challenge comes in.
I, I, I don't disagree with, with that aspect of the community. I, I just, again, want to, to say, and, and I see where Chris was going, and so I was going too, that, and I've heard other members talk about this, we just can't. We just can't say this is the beginning and the end, whatever that looks like. There are opportunities for us to, to still pick off other items on that list without going to referendum. And so I don't, and I won't even open that Pandora's box up here today. But we as a board, we have to then come together and decide on kind of what that plan, next 10 years, 15, whatever it looks like to move forward and how we want to attack it. Fran has already shown us that, you know, as, as we, um, put together our budgets, there's opportunities for us to save. Fran just, again, just showed us another great thing that we, you know, once we've actually met a target, now we actually might be able to go ahead and give some tax dollars back to the community, even though it might only be a penny, whatever. But it's still something to give back. So, so I, I get what you're saying.
And remember, I think we got to these projects because we didn't want to go to the community members for referendum, that we knew that that was not in the best interest of our community, so.
Okay. Okay. So 13 million on bonds over 13-year period of time.
Instead of nine.
Instead of nine over 10.
Okay.
Okay. 2.5 million life safety balance from your fund balances. Okay. On, go ahead, court. So this is the summer 2024 work. These are the three WOLD, um, well, three of the four WOLD fee structures. That's the windows here at Normandy Villa, um, for 24, 100, that's eight, eight and a half percent WOLD, WOLD fee. Um, the heating is an eight percent WOLD fee. The bell tower, an eight and a half percent WOLD fee. Um, pre-construction from Pepper, 19, 986. And then also, go ahead, court. Beginning now, the design phase for Heather Hill. So, so far, all we will have is the WOLD fee for that. Pepper won't even start looking at pre-construction until we actually have a design. Okay. Um, but again, we're looking to be ready to go to bid in September of 2024 is the goal. Um, the Pepper contracts have been reviewed by district council. They've also been reviewed by the property and casualty insurance carriers, um, and they have been attached to board docs. They're, they're a pretty significant chunk of paper. Is that it? We're good. So that is actually all the first four items on your discussion. You, they, you will have those up for approval later on in the board meeting. Any other questions?
Can you go back one slide? One more. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you, so I'm, you did A, B, C, and D, long-range facilities plan, Pepper Construction Management Contract, WOLD Architects Fee Proposal for 2425 Work, and Pepper Construction Fee Proposals for 2024 Work.
You got it.
Okay. All right. So we will move on to the fall assessment update.
Yes.
Welcome, Ms. Crawford.
Hey, everyone. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. So we're going to start with our, our state assessments, which have been, this, this presentation originated our, for our previous board meeting, so some of it is a little bit outdated, but we'll start with our state assessment data, which is our. Yes, please, please let me, is this, is this okay? Okay. Absolutely. Uh, that is our.
It won't offend me and I'm probably not Liz if you turn a little so that you, because I can hear you fine.
Is that okay?
I think that would make it easier.
Can I ask a different question? Is there a way to turn the volume on the speakers?
It, it's loud.
I'm just trying to accommodate.
I will turn and do my absolute best to project.
There you go. Maybe just move four feet to your right, that'd be perfect.
Yeah, we can, we can hear you fine.
My pleasure.
Yeah.
So we'll start with our state assessment data, which is our Illinois Assessment of Readiness. Recalling our school improvement plan presentation, something that is new for us this year. While we've always been focused on the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, all of our school improvement plan, our goals, our numerical goals are all now based on improvement on the IAR assessment. Just knowing that at the end of the day, the IAR assessment is sort of the final state on how our students did that school year. So we just want to make sure that we're staying focused on that. I also don't want to forget that our other state assessment, which is the Illinois Science Assessment or the ISA, uh, those reports have not been finalized yet. So we'll come back when we have the final numbers on how our students did on those. Is that better? Okay. So starting with IAR. We take IAR in grades three through eight in ELA and mathematics. What we did show is that we did improve on the IAR and what we're always looking for is percentage of students that meet or exceed on the IAR. That's what gets our students into, uh, reporting wise, into the green area. It shows that what that means is that our students are at grade level. They understand the grade level content or they more than understand the grade level content. So we went up from in 21, 22, uh, on ELA, I'm sorry, on mathematics, uh, from 21.5 to last year in 24.2. We do not have the final state averages for IAR. However, our preliminary piece of information that has not been released, I think, I don't think officially yet, is that we are still a little bit below the state average on the IAR in mathematics. That looks different when we get to the ELA data. Just going back another year, thinking back to when we were in pandemic years in 2020, 2020 and 21, on ELA, uh, we were at 27.4, I'm sorry. Yep, ELA 27.4, but on math, I'll get to that in a second. We were at 22, 22.4. So we've gone from 22.4, 21.5 to last year to 24.2. Certainly more room to accelerate growth, uh, but in terms of moving forward on the Illinois Assessment of Readiness and the percent of students who are meeting exceeding, we did move forward.
Is it fair to summarize that by saying we've made substantial progress in the number of our students that meet or exceed, but that's a trend that generally we've seen statewide?
Could you say the last portion of your statement again?
Students throughout the state also made progress. I mean, schools, everyone moved up substantially.
I, overall, the state did increase in math. Um, we, we increased similar to the state. When we look at ELA. There we go. When we look at ELA, we also increased from both years as well as in 2020 to 21, and we increased more than the state in ELA.
Okay. And so that's primarily the recovering from COVID hangover?
I think so. And I think everyone in the state would agree, and I think nationally, everyone would agree as we sort of, all districts in the state and throughout the country are climbing our way out of pandemic learning and remote learning and the effects of that. What we are, what we are showing is that our students are doing better every year incrementally on the IAR. We always want to accelerate that growth.
Well, if you can do this again next year, that would be, you know.
I, could you say that again?
If you could do this again next year, that would be great.
Absolutely. Absolutely. If we could take it in the winter, I think we'd see even better results. But that's what we're hoping is that we continue to move forward, uh, post-pandemic, to getting as back to normal as possible.
So we, we'll see this, the, the, um, the IAR, we see it in the fall and we see it in the spring, not in the winter, right?
We do not, yes. We do not see it in the winter. I'm starting with the state assessment, just to take us back to, uh, that focus on our school improvement plan goals. At the end of the day, all of our roads, we want to lead to IAR improvement.
Yeah, I, I'll ask that question at the end.
But this is a test only occurs once a year, so we just don't get the results till the fall, because it's the state test.
So, am I allowed to ask a question?
Politically, the answer is going to be no, but.
You say no, I'm allowed.
Typically not, Ms. Chopp. I'd be more than happy to meet with you after the meeting.
I'm looking at those numbers and I'm not very.
Did I misunderstand your question, David? But the IAR just occurs in the spring. We just, because this is, we just sit and twiddle our thumbs till the state tabulates the data in October.
Oh, so, so we're, this is just the spring that we're seeing in the fall, even though you just took the test, we're not going to see that again? And they haven't taken the test.
These are the, these are the results of the test taken in the spring.
Last.
Last spring, yes.
We're on 23, 24 now, so they'll take it again in 24.
This test was taken six months ago.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Okay, that's, that's what I was thought.
Yeah.
Because I know you just took tests recently.
Yes, that's coming up next. The math assessment, yeah.
Okay.
And we are starting to get these state assessment results a little sooner every year, get incrementally sooner.
Because that's what, that's what, that's what I've heard before, that we were getting them like really late in the game, so we really couldn't do anything with them. And so now.
It's October, it does, it's not sooner.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. This is, we're, we're not getting them so much earlier that we can actually change instruction based on them in the moment. Um, we're getting them sooner than September now. We're getting them more like July. And so I'm, I'm being gracious with that. I don't, I don't have any promises that that will continue, but what we're starting to see is the state is getting us those results sooner than they have in the past.
Yeah, it's, it came for me, the reason why that, the whole timing thing becomes important is that as we ask for the SIPs to be tighter and all these other requirements, all these other, uh, data issues to be kind of tightened and to look at, if that information's coming in at least a little bit earlier, that hopefully might help us have a better lens on what we're looking at.
Yeah.
So overall, uh, just as we move forward, move on from the IAR assessment, uh, we are seeing that our students are, as we come out of the pandemic, our students are coming out of ELA faster than they seem to be in math. That is a trend that we're hearing locally. It's a trend we're hearing statewide and it's a trend we're hearing nationwide, uh, but it's something that everyone is attempting to address daily. That trend will continue as we move into looking at our, uh, using our Equida data to look at how our students did on the fall map. So the fall map is the assessment that we just took, and that is the data that we do get right away. We can make instructional decisions on it. The biggest change that we made in addition to changing our SIP goals is that we also switched to bringing back the map assessment three times a year. In the past, we took map, for the past four or five years, we've taken map only in the fall and in the spring, uh, looking at our, our previous data. We wanted to make sure that we had an additional checkpoint so we can make those course corrections instructionally during the school year. So this year we will be reintroducing the, the map window. So we will come back again, uh, on the, the winter assessment data. That will include new NWA map data for reading and math.
How, how much of those decisions are driven by map results as opposed to classroom assessments?
Um, I, I think instructionally, those, the classroom assessments drive those decisions much more than map, because even now, kids have grown past their fall map data. It's situational and it's in that moment, but map does give us the continuum that gives us a good idea of what kids need to work on, but those formative assessments in classrooms are really what should be making those decisions.
So what's the perceived value of an additional assessment?
Yeah, um, the additional map assessment, uh, gives us the teachers, the data that they need to do that sort of gut check in the middle of the school year and make sure that what we're seeing with our classroom assessments is aligning with what we're seeing on, uh, more standardized assessment. And also, um, the, the timing of our spring map is the, the school year's over. There, there's not a lot that we can do after May, there are a few weeks, a few days left of school by the time we take the spring map. So it just gives us a way to align mid-year, our classroom assessments, also with what a, a nationally normed assessment is saying.
Ready for another question?
Yes.
Is your professional development aligned with maximizing, uh, course corrections or changes based on map results?
Not map specifically, all of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but our, our PLC conversations are based on utilizing the map data to improve instruction and then also a little less close to map, but our work with proficiency scales and standards-based learning all aligns to being able to, uh, assess where students are on a standard and use those scales to make sure that students are showing proficiency. And that's new for us this year, but that's something that we'll keep working on.
I won't belabor the point. I mean, certainly, I, I guess my, my experience has been that the classroom environment is going to give you more specific information and a better lens for what specific interventions or adjustment in course instruction you'll make as opposed to a mass, a standardized assessment. Because really, the assessment's objective is to measure what's going on in the classroom. And, and, and that's, to me, the, the value is in the classroom and having more instructional time as opposed to additional standardized assessment.
Absolutely. And I, I, I don't think that the introduction of the winter map, um, is intended to take the place of those classroom assessments. I think our teachers utilize both very well. Those classroom assessments tell us where to go tomorrow, what to do on the next day in small group instruction. The additional data point for winter map gives us a way to make sure that, that we're aligned throughout the school year. If we look at our standards work, what we're seeing is that some of the gaps that we're seeing in learning might point to, uh, an alignment check that we need to do continuously and map helps inform that. So it is certainly not the answer to everything. It's in addition to improving our PLC conversations. It's in addition to looking at those classroom-based assessments and making sure that we really are making the instructional changes.
Emma Bill, so we're, now we're going to go to, to take, to test three times a season. Initially, not since, like, long ago, but several years ago, we started with three, then we went to two, now we're sounding like we're going back to three. The, and I, I can't remember all of the arguments why we went from three to two, so I would love to refresh my memory and figure out what those were again, to figure out, so have we dealt with what those are, because now we're going to go from back to two to three?
Sure. Uh, one of the initial arguments, and it's not even so much an argument, just a reality, is that it, it does take instructional time. And so we want to make sure that we're maximizing our time as much as possible. In addition to adding the winter map, we also reduced Ames Web assessment only for our students who show on the map assessment they need it most. So previously, we were giving map to all students, Ames Web assessments to all students, and that is a lot of instructional time. And so we try to give and take a little bit and, and make sure that our, our, the assessments that we're giving are, are giving us more information than just data overload. So that's how we've sort of compensated for some of that, maximizing instructional time.
If I, I'm, again, I'm trying to go back to my wayback, wayback machine. Wasn't there also an issue with, I don't want, I don't want student burnout, but that the students were like being overtested and that parents felt? How, how is that being addressed?
Um, again, making sure that we're being selective with the students who are also taking Ames Web. If, if a student doesn't show that they need to take Ames Web, we're not giving it to them anymore. So just making sure that we're, we're balancing out the number of assessments that we're giving to all students.
It's coming back to me now. And so if I, so as you mentioned it, weren't some of the students who were taking it kind of, I won't say skewing the perspective, but it was, it was more that we really wanted to get the, the tier one, two, and threes, but we weren't getting that when we went to the three before. Now we're doing the two into two, hoping to grab a greater, um, pool of the individuals that were taking the test?
I don't recall that. In the way you're explaining, I may be missing it in your explanation.
I think what it was, the, because it wasn't mandatory, there were some students who were kind of not taking the test. And so we were wondering whether or not that was really giving us an accurate read on it.
That was the pilot for the science, the first year. Remember when you, when we didn't, everyone didn't have to take it? That was during COVID.
It was map, it was, it was map also. There, there was some concern about gaming the test, not trying.
During COVID though.
Nah, before. I, I don't think it matters to whether we do two tests a year or three, but there was something four or five years ago.
So we, we do get a time printout of everyone who takes the assessment, that any number of students have to go back and retake it. There's an absolute concern with students not taking the tests, all of these tests seriously, specifically IAR. The return to winter map was not easy. It's, it was begrudging, but it was in response to. The return to winter MAP was not easy, it's, it was begrudging, but it was in response to building needs. It wasn't something that we cooked up, it was a response to teachers wanting that mid-year check-in, building principals wanting to use that information as they're working with their school improvement teams, um, to respond to student needs. So truthfully, I don't know that I wanted to add it back, in being responsive to our teachers and building principals who wanna use the information. We decided it was the right move at this time.
Okay, and that, and that's kinda what I'm trying to get at, why, why did we swing back?
Sure.
So looking at our MAP data maybe, uh, just go back a little bit. Uh, I'm just gonna go back to IAR just a second, cause we, we got onto MAP, but just, uh, EQUAD charts that show, um, we always want to see, uh, green growth if it's statistically significant, which is plus point three point, or plus point three oh or higher. Um, so the, these charts just show where we fell by school on IAR, so some really good growth that landed us in the blue at most schools. And that's on ELA. And they're for math also. So again, those green dots indicate some growth, that does not mean that the growth is necessarily statistically significant, so that's an area of opportunity.
And the negatives are definitely not good, right?
Like the negative point oh two?
Yes.
Yes, so that's something we, it doesn't, just because it's green doesn't mean that it's something that we should, uh, not lean into further to explore. Okay, so I'm gonna skip ahead since we started to talk about MAP. Here we go, so we always start off the school year, uh, we don't have, uh, when the students take MAP, they're not, they don't get their MAP, their MAP year-long targets or their student growth targets for the school year until after they take that assessment. So in the fall, we're also looking for making sure that our students as a grade level are as close or higher to the national norm on MAP. So this chart just shows, uh, the first row is the national norm, and then our district averages by grade level. Where you see most grade levels are very close to the norm, if not higher, we have a few pockets where we may be a few points below the national norm, am I too far over to see?
No, no, you can, you can get closer to, to over here. Um, I'm, I'm, I, I always focus on this part with Cam in mind. What happens at fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, what, what's going on in those years with MAP?
I would take you back to that previous conversation about kids not taking some of the assessments seriously. This, I don't know, I don't know that that's responsible for all of it, but we certainly, as we, as we see, as we think about our assessment protocol from kindergarten through eighth grade, I think our junior high administrators would, would kinda back us up that it can, can become more challenging to keep kids motivated to take those assessments. And so I think that, as Ms. Crawford shared, that balance between the classroom formative assessments and these larger, um, district-wide assessments really kinda help us triangulate the data.
Is it fair to say though, that? Not that the brain stops growing, if that is, but there's more of a plateau as junior high hits, there's more growth. I, I don't know, like, I feel like.
Test scores, test scores plateau, don't mix that with actual plateauing.
Yeah, so.
The way the test is designed, the scores do plateau.
Okay.
That doesn't mean, it's not a brain thing.
Okay.
But, but you're correct.
That's what I, that's, okay.
So the, the, the test inherently plateaus at a, you know, two thirty or so. So, um, if you, if you look at the national norms, right, um, they slow down, so, so that's, it's, that's by design. I think what, what David is pointing out is arguably we're, hmm, no more than two and a half points behind or even, even with, even ahead of national norms up through fifth grade. And then in eighth grade, we, we, it's not huge, we fall back a couple points. It, it's, it's actually, this is actually, I think, more positive than a typical year, cause at least seventh grade is meeting national norms. I mean historically, uh, that's pretty rare, I don't.
In the past, we typically don't see, uh, on some level, we don't see these norms close until we get to the spring MAP, until we've done, we've done the learning. So this is promising for the fall MAP data, because it's their first introduction into assessing at that grade level. What we need to come back to in the winter, when we have the new assessment data, is are we keeping pace and are we, are we going higher than we need to? We know that there are lots of kids in this group within each grade level, uh, that need to show more than a year's worth of growth. And so that's what we have to keep our eye on, this gives us the baseline understanding of how students are doing.
I, I think part of David's concern is best illustrated with the previous slide. If we look at our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders' percent at benchmark, they're abysmal. Um, there's a trend that's consistent in terms of the performance being better in the earlier years and sliding as we get to our fifth, sixth, and seventh grades. Regardless of how close we are to the national norm, we still have a majority of students not at benchmark in math, and that's the concern.
Absolutely, and, and this is, that is consistent, was one of my next points, that is consistent with MAP data as well as with IAR data. This chart is for IAR, and it's the same trend that we've seen in, in MAP data. So that's, as we continue to work with teachers and then we, we continue to work in PLC meetings and professional development, there absolutely is that focus specifically on fifth grade, seventh, and eighth grade. It certainly, um, shows in sixth grade, but those three grade levels in particular in math are where we really need to focus. Um, also on, again, on the ELA side versus math, our ELA scores on either assessment are significantly higher than they are in math.
Is it? Is it generally the case that this pattern of number of kids hitting the standard for math is true at sort of all schools? Cause when I look at the national norm figures, they, they also, we're not that far behind.
Absolutely.
So like, uh, we, we went from twenty percent of kids meeting their benchmark in sixth grade to half of that. We, we didn't fall fifty percent behind the national norm, so, so I only ask because, you know, I, I hope that the, uh, everyone appreciates the gargantuan task we're asking them to perform, it's not just, it is just help this kid get better to a great degree. But it's also, we're asking them to do something very few schools in the country are doing, we recognize that, but that's, you know, it's not a small lift.
It's not, and, and it is, the, the overall growth on IAR in particular is very promising. Our consistent, our closeness to the national norm on MAP is promising. It's the continued work, it's, it's, it is a big ask, it is the same ask that, uh, we hear from our constituents and other colleagues and throughout the state. Everyone is working through the same, trudging through the same journey, um, to pull our, our students out of, uh, whatever happened during the pandemic. So, uh, it certainly just gives us food for thought, um, it, it does point out trends, and we are aware of those trends. I, I feel very confident from whether it's our school improvement plan work to our, our PLC meetings that our teachers know, based on the MAP scores, what our students need to work on, and that our teachers are talking about instruction and more importantly, student mastery of the grade level standards more than they ever have. And that's what's really important, and that's the work that we have to engage in this year.
So I guess my question from a board standpoint is this, as, as we look at the numbers, we're not satisfied with the numbers. And it's not an indictment, it's a simply stating where we are, this is where we are. If we continue the plans that we have in place, is it reasonable to expect significant improvement? Or is there something that we need to do differently, more aggressive, maybe in instructional practices are in terms of supports to be on the trajectory we wanna be on? From, from our standpoint, it's what do you need from us to put us on the trajectory where we can get the numbers to the point where they are a little bit more indicative of what we expect?
Absolutely, and I think that's a great question. I think the things that we've started this school year, uh, whether it is flexible grouping for reading and for math in grades three through five, so, uh, making sure that teachers have the best opportunity that they can within their grade level to differentiate for all students. So teachers are no longer teaching to a span of six different levels. Um, their, teach students are walking to the next class for math to focus on, uh, the skills that they need, and higher students may be walking to the next class to focus on the skills that they need. And then using those formative assessments and those unit assessments to make those switches again, um, so that we can really, really maximize our time. I think that is setting us off on a great course, it's clunky, it, we're in the midst of it right now, we're trudging through it. Uh, but it's important work because we have to make sure that we're getting all the time that we can out of the instructional minutes that we can't change. Additionally, we're gonna talk in a second about just monitoring closer and earlier how our student, some of those early indicators. So, uh, we started using bag reports, so behavior, attendance, and grades, to really make sure that before any of these assessments results come out, we know, who are the kids that are slipping through the cracks, and we can do something about them sooner than later. Um, and then also our, like I said, our refocus on professional learning community, communities and our standards-based learning work, those are all really, really deep things that we're doing. And so I think in terms of what we need right now, we need to work those plans, and we need to see how they're going, and we need to make those adjustments and come back in the winter and see how our scores went. We also know we have those formative assessment data points along the way. So if we need to say, this is working, but we need to tweak, we have the ability to do that.
So I don't have much doubt that you and Dana and all the team are doing as much as you can within your purview to address, you know, eleven percent of kids meeting what we've said is a standard for eighth grade. I think Michael was being more polite about it, but there's, you know, if we said get to twenty-five percent this year, would that be impossible? Probably.
I, I don't know that it's impossible, I think it depends on the grade level.
What if we said fifty percent?
Uh, fifty percent overall for math, I think would be unrealistic.
Right, so, so why is it unrealistic? It's, it's unrealistic because the reason those kids aren't there have to do with things that, that are not in your control, right?
Absolutely, and it's also possibly unrealistic, and, and I, I say the term unrealistic only to point to the amount of time that we have with students has not changed. So we still have a school year, and so if we look at the results that, or the growth that we've shown in a typical school year, um, we certainly know we want to do better, but I think doubling or in some grade levels tripling that, uh, it doesn't change the amount of time that we have.
So the way I understood Michael's question, Michael, please tell me if I, I got this wrong, was don't we have to do something more drastic? Like I have absolute confidence that you guys can move the ball forward a little bit every year.
It's accurate.
But, but, you know, um, and, and I, I, and we could probably, every board member probably has a different opinion as to why the state of kids is what it is. But, you know, my opinion is that it's parents, and it's not an accusation, it's just they're not, you know, they're not involved. You know, how, how many parents even know how bad this data looks? Um, I, and so, you know, I don't know how we make big moves to twenty-five percent or fifty percent without doing something that you're not already doing.
I think that's a good question, to really get into the weeds, as Amabel talked about this, the, and I think I shared this with the board, if not last week, maybe the week before, our path forward is reducing variance between classrooms. We have a level of expectation for what we expect to see in an eighth grade math class compared to a sixth grade math class, compared to a third grade math class, and we know what works, and providing direct feedback to teachers about what is effective in classrooms and what isn't, I think is really important. But even, I would say the organizational step beyond that to Michael's question is ending immediately the fallback of, well, you don't understand this concept, I'm gonna take you to the sta, the standards of grade level below. That is the absolute worst thing that we can do for our kids. Need to maintain the expectation for grade level standards and scaffold up those skills, and I would say that's what needs to work, frankly. And I think we do it better in some pockets than others. But when we're talking about proficiency scales, when we're talking about classroom walkthroughs that the administrative team does, when we talk about all of these different areas where we're focused on instruction, we have to be focused, this is not my, my, my quote, but, you know, that math is ruthlessly cumulative. And in order to combat that, a lot of the times we want to water down the standards, and the research is showing the exact opposite. You have to main, maintain that level of intensity with the grade level standards and scaffold up the specific skills that have to be addressed. You know, depending on where you look and who you ask, there's only twenty-one skills at sixth grade that should be taught to a kid who is struggling with sixth grade standards, twenty-one, I would say we don't do that.
I agree with that.
For sure, but I would say as a, as a mechanism in the school district, I don't know that we're, we're there yet. And so the work that, uh, DeBoer is doing, the work that Amabel is doing, certainly the building principles and instructional coaches, at this point, all of our classroom teachers is really focused on those grade level standards and get better on that scaffold from the, the previous standard up, so that you can get through that, that grade level concept and teach it to mastery, and then move on. We spend a lot of time admiring problems in classrooms. I think as our professional learning communities have become more effective at all of our buildings, the, the quality of the conversations have changed, the quality of the outcomes, whether it's an instructional practice, a response to a formative assessment, those things have changed, and I think those are the indicators that we see moving this forward more incrementally. I don't know that that's gonna generate a twenty percent jump, but I think that's, at least currently, how we see that progress line continuing to move upward is by getting it better at the type of instruction, but also what we're teaching our students and helping them learn.
Dr. Spence, my question to that point is this, if there is a need for a greater ability to deliver grade level appropriate content, scaffold it at multiple levels, do we have the instructional resources in place to support that without putting additional burden of teachers creating those resources into play?
Yeah, but you can't remove the teacher from that process, that's true.
Not, not an attempt to remove, but.
Yeah, we've got programs, we've, we've got programs for the programs.
Not, not programs, not programs, resources. And, and, and there's a distinct difference between those, cause there are programs upon programs upon programs. But in terms of having instructional resources that support teachers' attempt to differentiate instruction across multiple levels in the same classroom on the same topic, is a function of resources, or a function of teachers creating resources to do that?
I would go before that, I would go a clear understanding of the learning progression to reach a grade level standard. So I, I don't know, before you even get to the resource piece, I would, I would want us to have a conversation about where a typical teacher stands on, on her or his ability to scaffold that standard up. Because before you even get to the resource, you have to understand the math, and you have to understand how you can scaffold, you know, a fourth grade skill very specifically and surgically to help a fifth grader, you know, get up to speed on a particular topic, and then you move on and you don't dwell on those. And so it's, it's, I would say it's probably a column A and a column B conversation, but from a resource perspective, we can, we can certainly bring that back.
I, I guess my, my specific concern or question is, based on my experience in, in addressing this issue and addressing more levels than probably typical in the classroom here, it is a function of resources and not necessarily the expectation that teachers will create those resources, because that's a, an overwhelming lift for teachers to create resources of that magnitude on a daily basis. But if there are resources that are available, and I've had the opportunity to work with resources that are very capable of scaffolding, uh, across two, three, four grade levels simultaneously, it makes it a much more viable option in terms of impacting student performance. But the, the important piece of that is having resources that have been inspected and analyzed through that lens and not just in terms of a broader scope, it's a very specific objective, and you have to evaluate your resources based on those objectives.
Yeah, we're, we're on the same page.
I thought you were going somewhere else with this, I, I, I thought you were going, and, and I'm sorry to cut you off.
No, no, please.
But I'm, I still wanna dovetail where, where Michael was going with this, um, cause I'd like to hear your response to his. But with mine is the resource, the human resources. So we have, as a board, continued to, to support every human resource request, it's a every. A lot of the human resource requests that have come to us, we have, um, agreed to a new middle school thing, you know.
We have agreed to a new middle school thing, you know, model use of work. So I think we continue to throw resources. That's why I thought you were going with the resources. So I'd like to also find out, because ultimately, at some point Fran is going to come and say that the Estor Fund's gone and we have got to start to talk about which resources we're going to use. And so that's why, again, I thought that's where he was going. But I want to hear about that because, you know, when I look at this, I start thinking about, okay, where, where do we make those decisions at with this data in regard to resources? And are we getting anything back? I remember at one point, you know, we were talking about trying to track cohorts, you know, and how is that coming along and how those cohorts either, you know, progressing or regressing? And I know that that's a lot of detail to break down here, but you know, at some point, and I'm, to go back to my first year of work, I am not trying to get on the dance floor. But what I am saying is how are we measuring the needle moving in terms of those resources?
In the charts, right? So as we look at the charts that are increasing, those are good numbers, right? And I'm, we can, we can, we can pick a number and target that. Where those conversations tend to end is if you want a child to double or triple their growth, we know that that's time on task. Are we prepared to take a student out of art, music and PE so they can have three blocks of math? Are we prepared to do the same thing for ELA? So we can, I think all of those conversations are valid. They're probably for the learning and instruction team. But that's, as we talk about generating, you know, growth that is, you know, three years beyond what we typically see in a student, we have to make decisions that are three years beyond what that means. And I just, in the past, we've not been comfortable doing that. And so if we want to look at that, I, I... We could totally talk about that, but I think it's also realistic to say a year and a third is reasonable for accelerated growth. We expect all of our kids to grow minimum a year, period. That's, that's the least of it.
But before that, yeah, but before...
We're starting half of our students meeting standards and dropping, so if we would stop losing ground, then we don't have to worry about making up a third of a year every year. But I'm sorry.
Well, to that end, it makes me wonder what you're thinking about when it comes to early childhood and the early grades. Because we don't have to do as much catch-up if we have a really strong foundation for our own students. And if we're doing the things that Michael often talks about when it comes to math and teaching kids how to think mathematically, math fluency when we first get them. So for me, I'm not as, I mean, I want there to be 50% growth in eighth grade, but I just want to see a start at a higher point. So the foundational skills that are, so we're not constantly trying to fix the foundation at fifth grade. It's really hard then. But if we capture them in early childhood and pre-K and K and one, and we create a strong foundation that we build on, the leaps are smaller then for the kids that fall behind. And if we're using the things that we've created this year, like the bag report, then we're aware from, we are watching them when they're four and they're five and they're six, and we're seeing where the gaps are right away. And we are addressing those. Because right now, it's, it's too late, you know, when it's fifth, sixth, seventh grade. So let's start higher.
I'll give you an example of the challenge. We have 175 kids who've missed more than 10% of the school year so far.
Yeah, that too.
Some three-digit number, maybe already over 10 days. We've only been in school for five weeks. And so as we talk about addressing a problem in student achievement for students that aren't present for us to work with, I think that is another absolutely realistic issue that we have to address. I think we work with the ROE.
So what's our plan for addressing that? That's unusual. Is that, those are high numbers? I don't, I don't remember those being anywhere near that high in the past.
About 20, somewhere between 26 and 28% of our kids every year since COVID missed 10% or more this year.
We can, okay, so...
I guess, I guess the point is this. If we look at where we are, the question is, are we satisfied? If the answer to that question is no, where do we want to be? And then if the answer to the question is something significantly different, the next question is, are we doing the things necessary to get to that point? And if we are not, what are the things that we could or should be doing differently so that we can get to that point? And that's really the heart of the conversation. There are a lot of factors that play in. Certainly, attendance is a big issue. It plays a huge role. But the point is, given whatever time we have with students, are we getting what we need to from our students in terms of instruction, in terms of support, to get them to the point where we can at least be in a position where we have half our students on a grade level by eighth grade? And if the answer is we're doing everything necessary, then we might need to reevaluate. Because I don't see us getting to that point based on what we have in place currently.
So just, just for one piece of context, 34% of the kids at Parker last year missed 10% of the school year.
Understood. All right.
So again, that is not an excuse.
No.
It's just a data, it's just a data point.
I'm with you. I understand the challenge that we face, but in spite of the challenges, it doesn't change that we still have an opportunity to do better than what we are. And the question is, are we putting ourselves in the best position to do that? In other words, I can give you a hammer and ask you to go demo the sidewalk, or I could give you a jackhammer. You can get the job done with both, but one's going to be way more efficient than the other. The point is, have we walked to the classroom with the jackhammer yet? And that's what we need.
Here's, here's the thing. Michael's solution, resources, like that'll help you move, that'll help you add one or two percent to that bottom line of people meeting. Pre-K, they'll give you three by eighth grade, but it won't, but we're starting off at, again, and not that I give a ton of weight to meeting standards at first grade. But if we're starting off with kids, half of our students meeting our standards and we're ending up at 10, right? Then the problem that pre-K will help, it's just going to start with a higher number. We're still haven't solved the problem of dropping down. And we're avoiding issues that we all acknowledge are part of the problem. Parents.
Yes.
Not that parents are part of the problem. Parent attitudes towards education, parents' attitudes towards what they can do to help. Lack of parent involvement. You just said, we got, so, you know, if we got 30, how many students? It doesn't matter. We got tons of students that aren't showing the school. So... So we are, and we talk about it every year and nothing happens. We are avoiding the issue of dragging parents in and getting them involved and enthusiastically involved because we are not, the only thing that's going to get you to 25 or 50% is parents actively helping you. And so if we can sit here and bemoan the fact that they're not doing it, or we can come up with a plan to address it, but we're not...
We have that. That's part of the bag report process. That's certainly the much more aggressive absenteeism response. We know all the kids who have X number of tardies, absences, failing any grades, referrals. We have, we've identified those students and we're reaching out to those families to really kind of do exactly what we said, Cam. Just get in front of this early, try to help families understand their role in that process.
But the whole, I mean, the whole picture, right? Because I'm not, I'm not worried about the handful of parents that are just never going to cooperate. Like I'm well in the bed if we grabbed 100 random parents, pulled them in here and said, do you realize that less than 10% of the kids, or less than 11%, are meeting state, we can bring an eighth grade parents in here, they have no idea that that's true. The vast majority of parents have no idea that their kid is below standards. They don't, they have no idea. I've had meetings with parents, the first time I ever met with like the Heather Hill Homeowners Association. They said, achievement what? Achievement gap? What's that? Do you know, by the way, it was super fun, the only white guy in the room to explain what the achievement gap was to the Heather Hill Home Association.
We know what it is.
You know what it is now?
We knew before I got on the board, but I hear you.
This is like 10 years ago.
Yes, sir.
But the parents, they're not engaged enough. I'm sure there are masses of parents who, if they understood what the stakes were, there's all kinds of, there's math isn't important and all those attitudes. We need to address it because if we don't, not that we shouldn't do all these other things, and this isn't a criticism, you know, the reward of good, for good work is more work. So we're piling on.
Sure.
But we can't solve this problem without drastic solutions on parent engagement. I mean, call them in here like it's a private school. Tell them the volunteer time is required. Tell them their kid has to have extracurricular activity. We have to consider as much as pushing, as much as we possibly can on every front to bring them in.
Before the school year, I'd like to say something. So before the school year started, I actually uttered those same words to Dr. Smith. If private schools can drag parents in and tell the parents of all of the expectations that they have for them and their families and their students, why can't we? Because if we're, we were making this middle school model shift, which yay. So what a better opportunity than to say, parents, we need you. We need you making sure your students are coming in. We need you making sure that their parents, aunts, uncles, caregivers, foster parents, whoever it is at home caring for these students, we need you. And by way of, would you like your student schedule? Great. You're going to have to come in and we're going to talk to you. You have to come in and we have to talk to you because the way to get through to parents is to have them in front of us. Not us. You wonderful people who are making these buildings run every single day and say, we need you to help us because we can't help your students unless you're helping at home, on the bus, at Levitt Park, at walking down the street in front of IJP or past HF or all the way over in Chicago Heights. We can't help unless you help us. So that's what I said. That's my two cents. I'll get off my soapbox.
All right. So I'm back on my box again. So on this one, I love this. I completely agree with Carolyn regarding getting in front of us early. It's not that I don't agree with trying to bring parents to the table. But the pre-K conversation, I definitely think needs to continue. I think that at least that way we can try to add foundation. I don't think anybody at this table would disagree with that. But I really wanted to make sure that that also just didn't fall off the table. I do agree that bringing the parents to the table is a good idea. I'm just not so pie in the sky thinking that that's going to happen and it's going to really be an effective tool. I do though know that the resources issue is real and we've got to deal with that. I just don't know how. And I don't know where to place that. Again, I leave that up to people who do this professionally for a living. But I do think that what is clear, at least for me, is that we want to see something different and change. We want to see the needle move. And there's many different things that I'm sure you guys have heard over and over from us. But this is the one thing that is consistent, that we really want to see the needle move. I'm done.
Well, I'm going to, I'll say on that one, the needle is moving.
Yeah.
So more clarity on how much on those targets. I think that's because...
But we have our targets. We set those for the district plan last year, right?
Yeah.
So... Again, you guys are all doing great work. These are all great numbers, but you are not going to come anywhere near those, those targets without doing more.
Or doing different.
Something, something is missing from the menu of options, maybe a few things. But what you guys are doing is you're doing great work with the, and I don't want to give short shrift, all the operational stuff and getting teachers and classroom expectations aligned, everything you said. I don't want, because that all has to happen. But that's, you know, I've been looking at this long enough, that's going to move us from slightly below national norms to slightly above. That is not going to make a 10% move. 10% move has got to be something else. I might love the pre-K idea, but the chart on the screen you have there proves that it's not going to move the bottom line by eighth grade.
Well, so it will if we build in the skills that we should be building when it comes to something like math fluency from when they are four. It just makes a difference because they are now, we're not trying to interject new ideas and concepts and fix. We're setting up a stronger foundation. I mean, pre-K is important. It just is.
I agree.
It just is. Now, my only, I think we can think about how to engage parents, but I think when you talk about resources and that means also home visits and that means people sitting while someone's cooking dinner because they're on their way to their third job, helping them understand exactly what it means to help their kid work on whatever it is. And so like we can think about that, but I don't want it to be like parental involvement because parental involvement is, is complex and it's really expensive. And we don't, we're not thinking about how much it's going to cost to make sure that you equitably serve parents in helping them serve their kids. And, and there are plenty of parents who would and who know this, but are lost in knowing how to do it and how to figure out how to do that in between two or three jobs.
But some of that we can fix, right? Because when our kids are in primary grades, you know that learning your math facts and reading 20 minutes a day makes a difference. What makes a difference at sixth grade?
They don't know.
Parents don't know.
No.
And if they don't know, and if they're afraid or hate math or don't know how to do it and it's new math and they're freaking out, we've got to come up with a way, what helps a sixth grader achieve? What helps a seventh grader? What helps an eighth grader? I agree that parents are overwhelmed, working hard, most of them doing their best, right? I believe the 80/20 rule, right? 80% of people we can change. 80% of people will listen, will, will make a difference, will make a change. What is that change, though? What resources are we giving them to give their children? I think that's something we can't fix.
If you could distill math down to six tasks per grade, parents could get, you know, I could figure that out, right? You open a math curriculum, it's full of stuff that don't remember, don't care about. Every parent's had that experience, right? So I know, I know. I'm going to say things that hurt Michael's soul.
No, it doesn't hurt me. It just is indicative of the challenge we face, not only as a school, but as a nation when you talk about math instruction. There are a lot of assumptions that are inaccurate with regards to math instruction that we haven't addressed in a meaningful way in our educational setting and we see the impact of it. So if we want different results, we have to address it from an informed standpoint, not from, I had math, you had math, we know how to do math. That's not the way you improve math instruction. You do it by engaging in evidence-based practices, working with professional organizations from NCTM to Benjamin Bannaker to the Dana Center at University of Texas. There's a plethora of places that can give us guidance, but we have to access that information and come up with a viable means of implementing it in a classroom setting. We can't go off our own whims. The worst thing to do is think without spending time understanding what researchers have revealed in their work in terms of what works and what's a true solid foundation for students in terms of understanding, whether it be math or any other subject. So we have work to do. It's just a matter of us sitting down and deciding how to move that work forward.
But we can do that with parents, too.
It's primarily for us, but parent support obviously is very important.
Michael, to play devil's advocate, I'll try to help you, to play devil's advocate. I've heard the administration tell us that we have, and I agree with this part, that we have great teachers that are supported and all of that, but that they're like tapped out in terms of just throwing something else on their plate. And so the question is, a devil's advocate question, would you propose adding this on to their already full plate?
It's not a matter of adding. It's a matter of revising. We have to approach things differently from a better informed perspective, specifically with math, but in general. I'll focus my comments towards math because that's my area of expertise. And I know what challenges confront schools on a daily basis. It's the absence of engaging in best practices in terms of instruction. We've had math taught a certain way for decades. We've known for decades that it's highly ineffective, but because of the systems and structures in place to maintain it, we continue to use those bad practices. And we have to have the courage and wherewithal as an organization to move away from bad practices and engage in best practices for the benefit of our students. Do parents play a role? Absolutely. But the work that's going to matter most for our students has to come from us.
I think it's, I apologize.
Yeah, where are we going?
We didn't get to the...
Yeah, I did, I fast forwarded us to here, just what to comment.
Yeah, I did, I fast forwarded us to here, just want to comment on all of the feedback that we've heard. The things that we're doing right now are in response to our spring assessment data conversation that we had last year. So flexible grouping, standards-based learning, making sure that our teachers really understand the standards that they're, the grade level standards that students are required to master. So we can take the additional feedback and look at our plans and adjust our SIP plans and also keep those things that we're already doing in place. We want to make sure that we're allowing our teachers the time to work through the things that we've asked them to do, but then also capitalize on any opportunity to add additional things. I think the parent, the parent support and engagement piece leads us right into the next section that we were going to talk about for our bag reports. This is something new this year that we've asked all of our schools to take a close look at behavior attendance and grades mid-year, I'm sorry, mid-quarter and end of quarter for each quarter. So several checkpoints throughout the school year to just identify students early who we have concerns about. We don't want to be in a position where we feel like any students are slipping through the cracks and we had a chance to intervene, but we didn't. So our initial stab at this for the first mid-quarter was based on two or more absences from school, four or more tardies, as well as behavior infractions, whether they were major or minor, and then also failing grades, or close to failing grades. And keep in mind that these were pulled, it's mid-quarter, a little bit after mid-quarter. We're looking ahead to the end of the quarter where we'll update the charts. We take a look at our initial bag data. Courtney, I'm gonna need your help. It's not clicking again. Thank you. Taking a look at, by school, the number of students that we have concerns for, and then for attendance, the percentage. This information simply gives us the catalyst to start the conversation and to also start the conversation with the students, with the parents, that we know we need to target the most. So we have a high attendance concern at all of our schools, but particularly at the junior high. If we don't get kids in school, everything we're doing is, is lost. So we have to make sure that kids are coming to school. Within this data could be kids who missed two days of school and that's all they will miss because something happened or they were sick and they're not necessarily a high needs concern. Also within this data are students who have already missed several days of school that will impact their learning. And so, again, just trying to stop the trends that we notice already. And again, we're just a little bit past mid-quarter.
Can, I don't, I don't have, we don't have this chart. Yeah. So my question, so I didn't get a chance to really look at this. I wanna make sure I understand what I'm looking at. So of the 136 students at Parker, 17% of them have, what made them, what, why are they in that category? What does that mean?
So we only focused on grades three through eight for now. We know that we probably need to expand to look at K through two also. But what it means is that at Parker, for example, within grades six through eight, there are 136 kids that we're concerned about for attendance. So it may be two or more.
How many? Yeah, what, what was the concern, what was the cutoff for concern?
Two, two or more absences.
Oh, two or more.
And four or more tardies. I apologize. That was, I thought it was on the previous slide. There we go. So two or more absences from school, four or more tardies, and then additional indicators for behavior and for grades. So there may be some overlap. As I went through the charts for the schools, tried to delineate, like, this kid, we're, we're more concerned about attendance than we are for grades, but there may be some overlap as we go through those.
Did it have to have all of those criteria?
No.
So if you, if I was just absent for two days, I would be in that?
Yes, we wanted to hit any student who has any of, any concerns with these criteria.
Can you go to the chart again now?
I feel like that might be a skewed number. Because if I was out for two days because I had strep
Absolutely.
and now I'm on this 136 and I might not miss any days and never have a write-up ever in my history.
Absolutely. So the point is, is that there are kids in here that it's not a true concern. It just means something happened.
Sure.
But there are a lot of kids that are concerned in that data.
This is, I wanna make sure that we're clear. This is in direct response, not adjacent. Direct response to board feedback about identifying issues earlier and making sure. No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm just drawing the connection. I don't need to know. I'm just saying that this is, this is in direct response to that feedback. Because we identified that we're gonna pick up, you know, the child who, you know, had to go out of town for three days and now they're on here. And I'm prepared for those nasty calls from somebody saying, "How dare you put my kid on this list." I'm okay with that. The fact of the matter is, we need to know where those issues are. And if we never talk to those parents again, that's great. Our history shows us, though, that these are the children who not only will continue this, but if we don't intervene now, they may end up here for discipline conversations, larger conversations about their future in the district, any number of things. And so, we really kinda started three-day, Amabel's right, you'd probably pick up K-2. But as our first pass, we really wanna get in front of these students and try to intervene as soon as possible.
For quarter two, would you mind breaking out Parker by grade level?
Absolutely, sure. Yeah, and again, just, it's very, the first go-around feels rough because we're trudging through something new. But I know, looking through these, it lets us know who we need to engage differently. It lets Jackie and I know which parents need to hear from her and I directly because there's a more intense level of communication that needs to happen with the family. But it doesn't lead to some, you know, automatic mark or demerit or bad grade for the kid at all. It just means that we are paying attention and that we know who to pay attention to.
Yeah, no, for me, again, I'm sitting at half-bath. This is what, this is what I wanted to see now as opposed to in March or April. I'm though kind of with Carolyn. Define what these.
It's on the previous one. We just need a copy of this.
So these were the criteria.
Okay. Got that. So now, now to go back. So it says, grade number, so...
So this is for the first quarter again, not through the entire quarter. Grades three through eight, students who were identified as hitting on at least one of the criteria on the previous slide. So that's the, the first row is the number of students at the school, the percentage that that is. And remember, it's only for grades three through eight for the elementary schools. It's only representing grades three through five. The number of students that grades are a concern for and the number of students that our behavior are concerned and that's identified.
That's the definition I wanted to hear.
So behavior, the criteria was one or more major, or can we go back to that one? It was majors and minors, one or more major and two or more minor infractions.
Thank you.
And so, what's that on grades again?
A D?
Could you repeat that again?
Those are Ds?
D or U?
A D or failing grade.
Okay, that's okay. That's a great.
Or missing assignments.
So there are tweaks that we need to make to this as we go through our second round. But again, just starting the conversation and level, creating levels of intervention for our kids.
I gotta ask the obvious question. Have you, you guys are talking about what to do with these interventions?
Yes, if we could go to the next one there. So our next steps are, we've started the next step. Our teachers are talking about these students. So teachers, in a lot of cases, help to inform this data. And a lot of the conversations happen during our professional learning communities meetings when we're talking about tier-two and three-level support for students. Our next steps is that it may, for a kid with a high attendance concern, there, there will be district intervention. There will be those conversations with parents. There are families on this list that will receive direct communication about truancy and making sure that we're also following up with what can we do to support, but we need your child at school. Students who need to be recommended for tutoring or students who may need a tier-two or three behavior intervention that are not already receiving that. So this just gives us the platform to be able to think differently about how do we need to support the students that are on this list.
No, thank, thank you, Dr. Smith, for this work. This was part of our conversation last year regarding being more proactive instead of reactive. Finding out when something's going on early and responding to it and providing support and interventions on the front end. So it's awesome to see this type of work.
Of course. I think this really comes down to Amabel and the principals. As we started conceptualizing this this summer, we really kinda took the board's feedback to heart, right? Where can we get in front of some of these issues? I think our real next step will be, you know, we have made the change at Parker. So we do have dedicated time for teachers to sit and talk about kids from an interdisciplinary perspective on what this means. So now we want to see, okay, now what, right? We've identified, you know, we have a number of kids who, maybe there's some in there who, something weird happened, a broken foot and they couldn't come to school. Okay, fine. Filter out all of those, but for everyone else, what are we going to do that's meaningfully different? And I think that's, from a board perspective, we'll cue you on some of those questions to ask when we get to the update. Because I think that's what we're looking for, right? So we know who they are. Now what are we going to do between now, end of the quarter, et cetera, and when we come back?
That's what I was gonna ask is like the when, because you go back to that slide. So if I had to put a pin in this, about when it was this? Is this about now, like, beginning October?
This is as of maybe a week ago. Some, depending on the school, we may have added some students, so give or take a week.
So the end of September?
Yeah, plus or minus.
When would we see some, again, the same thing, but a change? Or hopefully the numbers are down, whatever, but there, we reflected there have been things done.
Yes. So we're monitoring mid-quarter and end of quarter. So we should be able to provide an update shortly after we finish the first quarter, which is right around the corner. We're a little bit behind. We had, we missed a meeting, so we'll, we have a week or two that's sort of getting jumbled together. But our next checkpoint will be the end of quarter one.
Which is November, October?
The grades are due on the 25th, so it's a little bit, the beginning of that week, so like the 18th, 19th.
So we'll see, you guys come back to us with this like?
23rd.
No.
That's too soon. We'll need time to process that data. I would say early November.
The November 16th is probably a target.
Yeah, we need time to run reports and...
Thanks.
Of course.
And then just that's an example of the template that we're collecting for each of our students who have a bag report started. Again, quarter, end of quarter one, quarter two, maybe additional students added to the reports. But we are keeping file of all of those. And then just final next steps. I think we mentioned most of these, but continuing to monitor our bag reports, continuing to work with our teachers on standard-based learning through our professional development, much stronger professional learning community meetings this year, our flexible grouping in grades three through five, and then our book study with our principals, which is ongoing to just continue to work on that collective teacher efficacy and that teachers, that buy-in to have positive impact on student learning.
Awesome. You wanna share the titles of the books?
Yes, it is called "The Collective Teacher Efficacy Playbook." It's just that straightforward, yes. I'll share a copy.
How are the, the bag meetings going, right? Like, are you guys walking out of those meetings like, "Oh, this is really working," or is it, are you walking out of those meetings and checking how many years do you have of retirement? I mean, you know, how, is it mixed bag?
It's, it's clunky. And it's like with anything that's new. It's, it's not a meeting. It's taken several meetings, especially at the junior high. And that, I really just commend our schools for the hard work put in. We need to continue to refine and establish routine and procedure for the bag reports. This first iteration, we just wanted to get the data out there.
I guess it's kinda my wonder about, like, for the, with the parents or the students, like, how's that piece going?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're talking about the conversations with parents.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I thought you were thinking, you were talking about on the process side. The conversations with parents, you know, I think they need to be layered. Jackie and I sat down today and looked at kids that are just, they're hitting on everything. And so we have to do more than just the teacher calling home or the teacher sending a letter home. And then there's probably a more general layer of students who are hitting on, you know, maybe four absences. It's not out of control yet, but it will be if there's four more in quarter two. But those, I think the more intense the conversations, the more it needs to be one-on-one with us at district or with the principal, with the parent. Because those reasons for why a child may be absent or not engaging at school are extremely varied, depending on the family.
But we can, when we bring the next iteration back, we'll bring some anecdotal information on the, kind of the parent intersection as well. And just to share that with the board.
And just our final piece of data as we hand off to talk about a recap of our Summer Academy program this year. Part of the MAP data is also performance on, from our students who participated in Summer Academy. Ekra allows us to group those students and code them so we know how Summer, Summer Academy students did on the Fall MAP Assessment in comparison to their spring scores. Of the 578 Summer Academy students who took MAP, we had 70% of them meet expected growth and then also 25% of them who met the benchmark. So consistent with what we saw, a little bit higher than what we saw for the overall group. And with that, I will hand it, oh, can I hand it over?
Absolutely. Just one point of context on the 70%. That puts us in the top 10% of all nationwide districts taking the MAP Assessment. That's the typical growth target that's used.
I know one thing, and I don't know if it was with asterisks in the bag, but one of the questions that, one of the things that continued to come out in some of our conversations was whether or not an IEP had been performed or done on certain situations. So maybe put an asterisk in that one on the, the bag report.
Can you clarify where you want that indicated?
I knew that was gonna come up. So, go back to the bag. Right there. So probably it's gonna be in column, the last column, the behavioral column.
To indicate the number of students with IEPs?
Yes. Was that too specific? Would I get into too much?
No, I just, I don't know. We can bring that. I'd be worried about the column next to it and the grades piece.
Right. And that question always would come out, whether or not that exists or not when it came to the behavior rules.
So something that might be helpful is finding the correlation between these students and whether or not they're receiving special education services. That's something that Jackie and I did today and correlate and say, which of these students have IEPs or 504s or plans that were already working and do we need to revisit their plans and are they working?
That would be, that's, yep.
That works? Does that, okay, great. We'll bring that back to you.
Okay, I will hand it over to our Summer Academy administrators who did an absolutely fantastic job over the summer. Ms. Dunwoodie, our Summer Academy principal, and Ms. Tamika Britton, our Summer Academy assistant principal.
Welcome, both of you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm Tamika Britton. I had the pleasure of being the assistant principal for Summer Academy this past summer. And we were just thrilled with just the smiling faces that entered the door each day during the summertime, staff and students, just the engagement that we saw taking place in the classroom over the summer. Summer Academy was six weeks. It was half-day, 8:30 to 11:30. We still had great attendance. I think we had about 600 students attend summer school, 82 staff members. We were able to provide related services such as speech, OTPT resource. And just to hear the amount of teachers saying, "Sign me up for next year." They enjoyed it. The length of the day was perfect for them. The curriculum was perfect. So I was very thrilled to serve in that role this past summer. And the kids did great. So thank you so much for having us. And Amabel will continue the rest of the presentation.
So our Summer Academy program this year was a little bit different than it has been in the past. It was different in the aspect of our students received targeted instruction in either reading or math, okay, this year. And so, in doing that, we had two levels of programs that we offered. We offered a LIFT program. And our LIFT program was designed to target, targeted instruction for students who were significantly below grade level in the areas of ELA or math. And then we had an Excel program. And that program was designed to target students who were at or above grade level. that program was designed to target students who were, um, at or above grade level in the areas of reading, ELA, or math. Okay, so, um, within those two programs, we had a vast amount of resources, um, speaking to, um, some of the, all of our, um, Summer Academy resources were relatively new this year, and so our teachers really indicated that our students, our students were engaged, um, it was rigorous enough for them, and it was a way for students to, um, have that differentiated instruction. Our students also participated in specials programs over the summer, we had, um, PE, we had STEAM, music and art, our students had one of those classes three times per week. Something that was new to our program this year was our Code Champs program, and this program, um, was provided for our fifth through eighth grade students, and our students were able to, um, participate in, um, our coding program, um, and students, this was a very popular program with our students, um, and our parents, students worked in teams, um, different coding challenges, they had the opportunities to, um, win, um, awards and badges, and so this was a very, um, popular program with our students over the summer. Progress reports, all of our students, um, did receive progress reports at the end of the summer, and our progress reports provided parents with, um, students' strengths and areas of opportunity, so that parents knew where they can, um, where, where kids did wonderful at and things that they needed to work on. We, um, continued our special education program over the summer as well, um, we had 109 special education students, um, we offered recovery services, students received these services in the area of reading and math, they also received related services, um, as Tamika indicated, which were social works, um, social work, speech and, um, occupational therapy. We also offered our, um, ESY program, which is our inner school, our extended school year program over the summer, and this program targeted our students who are, um, generally in our instructional classrooms over, during the regular school year, and so they continued to work on their IEP goals and also receive their related services. To Ms. Griggs' point, we offered a kinder prep program over the summer, which was amazing, we had 63 students in this program, and, um, it was, it was just so, so inspiring to see the kids coming in each day, learning the protocols and procedures of being in school, um, they learned, they had various focus areas, things to get them prepared for kindergarten this upcoming school year. So we did, um, provide a survey to our teachers, um, at the end of Summer Academy, and so these are some things that they indicated were strengths for our Summer Academy program, they did, um, think that the length of the school day was just right for our students, um, they found the curriculum to be engaging, um, they, um, thought the specials classes were fun, and then they felt that all of the staff were very collaborative. They also indicated some areas of opportunity, so they would like to see us using more space in Parker, so that our specials teachers do have a classroom and not pushing into the classroom when they are having that time, and then, um, they would like additional planning, when we all, when we all like additional planning time, and there's some professional development. We also, um, gave a survey to our parents as well, and so some of the strengths that they indicated, they thought that the staff was enthusiastic, um, and dedicated, um, they felt their curriculum was engaging, um, they did, I had a host of parents say that their kids were up and ready to go to school each day, um, during the summer, so that was great, and they really enjoyed the weekly newsletters and the pictures. Some areas of opportunity, they would like to see our students go on field trips, um, next summer, and then, um, one of the things, um, they talked about was more classroom-specific newsletters, so our newsletters were general and gave a general overview of what we were doing, but they would like to see newsletters coming, um, from the classroom, and then they also talked about, um, more, um, enrichment and specials opportunities. This is the diagram that indicates, um, our, some teacher feedback, and the question for this particular diagram was, um, the length of the school day, and I think this is, this says 86.5% of students, of teachers thought the school day was just right. We had 81.1% of our teachers, um, stating that they'll be willing to come back next year and teach. Some of the comments, um, from our parents, wa, from our teachers, were that, um, they really enjoyed the K2 foundational, um, skills program, that was new this summer, and then the Summer Scholars theme projects. This is, um, diagrams of our parent feedback, and, um, we had, the blue and the red shows that majority of our parents indicated that their student enjoyed Summer Academy, the blue and the red on the next, um, diagram indicates that, um, majority of the parents that felt that this program helped their child academically, and then the blue and the red indicate that they, parents felt that they received clear and consistent communication.
Can you go back to that one? So, purple, red, I wanna say yellow.
I wasn't gonna say anything.
Okay.
Color choices. No, 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 it's such a petty thing.
Oh.
I, I see red, and it's like, oh, that's the bad, you have to align.
Red was agreed.
Yeah, yeah, the red's good.
I'm trying to find the strongly disagree, which color is that one?
Purple.
Purple.
Which one strongly agree?
Strongly agree.
Strongly agree is purple, oh, no.
Strongly is blue.
But on here, it looks.
See, I can't see the difference between strongly agree and strongly disagreed.
Strongly agree, red for agreed.
Does it?
And yellow is neutral.
The, the blue is colors that looks purple is strongly agree, strongly disagree only appears in the third circle pie chart, right?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
It's so small and the other one's.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, mine's purple.
How many people or parents took the survey?
About 100, yeah, so, continuing to work on getting more of the survey responses, it's always the families, people finish summer school and head out with them. I just wanted to add also, the, uh, K2 foundational skills program that the teachers commented on is also a program, an extension of our Ready Gen ELA program, uh, a resource that we brought into the regular school year this year, so we tried it out in Summer Academy, our teachers had really, really great feedback on it for K2 foundational skills, and they're working within this year.
So the middle one, and again, I'm just making sure I'm reading this properly, is the parents saying the academy helped my child improve academically, so, that would be a third of them either were neutral or disagreed?
Right.
That's correct.
And he agreed.
Okay. Do we know why? Okay, thanks.
And we'll say overwhelmingly, the anecdotal comments on Summer Academy were very positive from your survey, so we look through those, I think here and there, comments about, you know, longer school day, running more programs, field trips, those types of things were sparse, but the most critical feedback is extremely positive.
Is it overly optimistic to assume the other 500 people who didn't respond to the survey, um, are generally satisfied with Summer Academy? I mean, usually, if I'm mad at you, I will fail the survey, if I'm not, I mean, that's just me, but I, I kinda, I assume, I don't know if it's valid assumption, I tend to assume here that the negatives are overstated and the positives are understated when you have only one out of five or six people responding. I assume the people, most, the vast majority of people didn't respond would have said, yeah, it was good.
Yeah, and, and to Cam's point, that's kind of what I'm going, it's, when you have just a limited number of people surveyed, which, you can't make people survey, that's, that sucks.
Yeah.
We really wish, I know for me, again, I'm, I'm, I'm Mr. Resources, and back to, you know, the, the extended school, because last year, well, I don't even call it, this year was half a day.
Yeah.
Last year was whole day, so that had a different resource kind of component to it, and I'm trying to figure out again, whether or not, you know, we, we were able to move the needle in terms of those students, you know, showing the yes, to what I look at those, those test scores, like, those are the ones who benefited the most, and a half a day really did it, and I, I get why the teachers were kinda like, cool, I'm outta here, I get another half a day to go ahead and go to the beach and do whatever they gotta do, 'cause I get that, so.
So prior week, we had four less students than we did when we had full day, and we still had over 800 students enrolled in Summer Academy. I think the impact also shows in the 54th data, so, our students actually, uh, Summer Academy students who took the Fall MAP actually did better on Fall MAP in comparison to students who participated, that data from last year, maybe not the same students, um, because maybe because the same students did attend Summer Academy, but we can assume that there's some who have, that the same students gave, they, they did better, if not the same as they did last year with the full day program.
Okay, 'cause yeah, 'cause again, I'm, sort, and I know you can't do it perfectly, I'm trying to follow the cohorts, I'm trying to follow the patterns, I'm trying to see if, you know, if we're hitting same students, if they're hitting, we're hitting larger grouping students, and what impacts it has, sort of kind of stuff that you heard earlier, so I'm just trying to track that with this, and I don't know how, you guys, I'm sure have, so, that's kind of what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah. You guys, photos of our students in action with our same component of, uh, the Summer Scholars program. So in summary, um, our parents did feel that Summer Academy was beneficial to their students, both academically and socially, um, students were actively engaged during Summer Academy, um, the curriculum was well received by our teachers, um, our teachers did feel that our students were, um, challenged, and they, um, they, they rose to the occasion, they felt that students were, um, engaged and happy. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, DeBrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Jackie.
Oh, thank you.
So this is a topic we wanted to bring back, we always try to have, you know, a couple of times per year, we wanna make sure that we're keeping our thumb on our out-of-district placements, ideally, um, we wanna educate as many kids as possible within the boundaries of our school district, depending on their needs, that may not be possible, and so, this is an opportunity to talk about not only out-of-district placements, but could be that intersection with speed as well.
Surely, so, looking at the students that we have right now that are outplaced, um, in comparison to last year, we have had an increase in students with the disability of autism, and the autism is presenting itself in a non-verbal and very intensive way. Unfortunately, we do not have in district, a program that is dedicated to meeting the needs of these students, meaning that we do not offer applied behavior analysis, which is a strategy that really does help students start to develop that language. Also, some of the students with autism also have some difficult behaviors, so we do need to make sure that we are putting together a very comprehensive plan for them, um, centering around their language, behavior, and also their academics. Right now, as I said, we've had an increase in our students with autism, unfortunately, speed has also not been able to provide our parents and families with all of the resources that they need. There has been a decrease, we have two buckets that we look at when we're outplacing students, there's the private placement, which we do get reimbursement, those are those therapeutic, therapeutic schools, or, and there is a chart that represents that, so your schools such as Britton, or Acacia, or, um, schools that would be considered not public, whereas speed is our public outplacement, we do not get reimbursement for speed placements, but we always try to tap into that program first, because it is less costly to the district. Unfortunately, there have been many changes with staffing, they do not have enough people working there right now, and truly wanting to give our neediest kids the best possible opportunity, sometimes speed is just not the, the best choice for them, which has led us then to have to go to some of these private schools, which, if you can see in chart A, talks about the amount of students that are, um, in comparison with autism, you know, going from 14 to 24, um, and those are a combination of our children moving in, and some of our three-year-olds that are coming up now that were literally born during COVID and have, you know, issues and things like that, they might not have gotten the early intervention services that they needed, um, not through us, but through the state, so we are looking that those students do have those higher needs. We also have had an increase in our students with emotional disabilities, um, and these students normally are outplaced because of their behaviors, because of the fact that they sometimes are har, can cause harm to themselves or others, and we have to make sure that the program that they are in has a therapeutic type of, um, setting, which we cannot provide within the district. We do our best, we are getting better at providing those services to students, however, the level of need, um, is, is exceptional, we don't make these decisions lightly when we decide to outplace a student. So that's just looking chart A at the amount of students and the different disabilities that we do normally could end up outplacing, we have a lot of students in the district though, too, that are ED or have autism that are functioning very well within our schools too. Looking at those non-reimbursed.
Explain that acronym for a second.
I'm sorry.
ED?
What?
ED?
ED, emotional disability.
I would, I would just say the acronym.
That is, what do you mean?
No, you said ED, I would say the acronym, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, emotional disability, I said that is, okay, all right, and then looking at our, um, non-reimbursed public school placements, these are, as I said, we started, we have been decreasing the students that are going to our speed cooperative for the last few years, there's been a trend, um, that less students are going there, and it's really just a direct, uh, correlation to the services are not at the level that they need to be for our students. And then, looking at our private school placements, so these are schools that we do, um, we do get reimbursement from the state, it's not 100%, but we do get some money back from that, and all of that's actually coming out right now, um, what those reimbursements look like, and if you can see too, a lot of those schools there that we are placing students are specializing in, um, emotional, students that have emotional disabilities and students with autism. And moving forward and looking at, uh, where we are right now, we have been able to, even though our numbers have increased, we have been able to bring a few students back to the district, we are constantly looking at, um, who is doing well, who's meeting the expectations, who can be brought back into our instructional program, we have brought, um, some speed students back this current year, um, we also are really continuing to monitor the progress of students that are outplaced and seeing what types of transition plans we need to put in place to bring them back to the district. But again, it's that level of support that we wanna make sure the district can provide, and also that they are growing, um, academically and behaviorally and in communication, which in some levels, they need very high support in those areas.
I, no, 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 you go first. No. Um, now you made me, so... Is it specific to each, our private outplacements? Private out, I'm sorry, it's late, my brain is off. We don't get reimbursed at all for those?
For speed, we do not.
Not for speed, I'm sorry, so, like, Britton and all of those?
We do.
We do get reimbursed. We do get reimbursed, okay.
It's not 100%.
Not, not.
So the formula.
Yes, what is that, so, yes, sure.
Essentially, the district is on hold for two times our per pack of tuition, so our tuition rate is give or take $11,000 to $12,000, so the district is going to be on hold at a minimum for twice what that per pack of tuition is, then presumably the state will come in and pick up now, escape some things, pro-rating that happens. So that's where your, your reimbursement.
Okay. And that would be chart C, so those schools, right.
Go ahead, David, I have even it.
So, for me, and thank you for the re- Um, so for me, and thank you for the report. Um, can you go back to that first chart?
The disabilities.
Yeah, so, um.
Chart A.
Right, 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 okay. So my question is, when I look at twenty-one and twenty-two to twenty-three, um, everything else, like as you were pointing out, makes sense cuz it's kind of there. The numbers don't really fluctuate, change a whole lot. The autism, to your point again, increased a great deal. Um, do we know whether those are, are, are students in the younger grades or are those students in the middle school?
Majority of them are in the younger grades. There are just a couple that are at the middle school level. But I can bring that data back to show you, but, yeah.
So we can anticipate, right, so we can basically anticipate this number kind of staying the same for several years. Um. The reason I ask that question, again, kind of goes back to this whole resource thing. Um, one of the things that, um, the superintendent says a lot is if you build it, come. So are we looking to try to do something with our staff to deal with autism at this point?
We already do. Um, right now, we are working through high leverage practices with special education. And a big part of that is really delving into those different disabilities, um, looking at the behavioral plans, communication devices, things like that. We've brought a lot of that professional development into the district over the last few years. And we're continuing to do that this year. So yes, to answer your question, we are. Um, as far as program-wise, that's a very large conversation that I think we have to look at as far as if we need additional classes to support these students within district. That is a, something we need to start to investigate for sure. If that's what you're kind of meaning for.
That is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's a space issue.
Yeah, right.
That's really what I can do. What's preventing us, even, even, let's take a step back, fifteen thousand feet. Part of the issue with speed is that fifty percent of their classrooms are staffed with non-certified teachers. I can envision a future where we're no longer a part of that co-op, but obviously there are large conversations to be had with that. Making that decision is enormous. Because now we don't have a natural landing spot for a number of those kids. So we need to think about it from a, a program perspective. Our stopper tends to be space. So when you think about, um, you know, a program for students and children who have autism, that's probably going to be somewhere three to four adults to every seven children. Plus or minus. And that's a classroom. And we don't have any elementary classrooms left. We don't have necessarily classes at the junior high. And so when we, when we start to think about how we would move out of this, you have that long-range plan kind of comes back. And then it's a conversation of, okay, well, do we have the money to add classrooms? Because in order for us to save anything here, and it's, we'd certainly save money potentially, but it's probably a twenty-five-year payoff when you add in the construction and all those different things. That's where we stop. Because we don't have a location to bring these programs back into the district. We're limited on how we can respond.
And also the related services, too. So a lot of these programs, pretty much all of them, provide additional speech. There might be a speech pathologist that's in the classroom the entire day. Or a social worker within the therapeutic setting that's in there two to three times a week doing groups. Our social workers are awesome, but they're stretched already. So to be able to provide those services, too, is a big difference to what we can right now provide. So that's just something also to think about, the space and the services.
Yeah, and, 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 and thank you. Because I think you're hearing where I'm going with this. It's like, this is the beginning and they're going to be with us for a while. And so we would be remiss if we didn't at least start having a conversation about what it is that we are going to do with our students to make sure they receive ample services. And so I, I, I get the space thing and, and I'm glad to hear that also it's really about the long-range planning. Um, but I know I'd like to hear more about, you know, thoughts on that.
Well, we have, we have four special ed openings now. And so there's the other piece.
The other piece, yes.
We can craft it, we may not be able to staff it. And now we've got a, now it's not a, hmm, an inconvenience. It's a, it's a federal issue because now we're not providing services to kids. And so, you know, I, I think there's a number of pieces. It has to be addressed through pay. It has to be addressed through higher ed. It has to be addressed through our physical plant with construction and all of those different pieces. We can change some of those. I don't know that we can effectively change all of them.
We've been lucky, we do have two student teachers coming through in special education next, uh, next quarter. So just thinking about, you know, how to get those teachers in early and get them trained in our system is a great thing. So we're lucky that we have two of them anyway, just as a plus coming along.
And, 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 and thank you again. I, I, I'm, I'm gonna stop on my line of questioning by, by saying, is this something that we're gonna hear more about? Or is this the, where, is there a next step to hear about doing something further? Or this is it?
This is it for now, without board direction.
So my question, um, is more geared towards the fourteen that are left that are feeding into speed. Um, and I'm not trying to drag them out of there. But obviously, we've seen a decrease in satisfaction or services that are able to be provided by speed. Um, how are the fourteen that are left liking their experience in the cooperative?
So right now, no news is good news.
Sure.
As far as, uh, most of the parents that were unhappy and we worked through the issues and things, trying to provide more support or trying to figure out how to resolve it, um, have been moved to different placements. So that's pretty much been taken care of from last year to this year. Um, right now, we're just the case managers or myself are attending those IEP meetings with speed, the annual reviews, the eligibility meetings, and just making sure that we are definitely, they're our kids, you know, they're, they're a part of us. And we go to those meetings with that look or that, you know, that perspective. So we are keeping tabs on where they are right now, obviously, and how they're doing. Um, I haven't had any other parent complaints right now. Um, they seem satisfied. Um, the meetings I've attended so far this year have seemed okay, um, along with our case managers. But it's something we're constantly looking at and thinking about as we're going to any of our outplace meetings. We want to make sure those programs are providing what they say they're doing and students are making progress. That's the biggest part of it.
I get the pleasure of sitting on eight oh two for representing our district. And that district, like ours and many others across the state and country and probably around the world are still facing, um, finding suitable instructor, instructors for their students. And so, um, I'm sympathetic on that side. Obviously, I served this district before I served anybody else. So, um, but it's, it's a difficult situation any way you look at it, so.
And I'm grateful of the work that Dr. Hallman does at speed. She does a yeoman's job, she communicates. Um, I think we're working through some of the pieces on, you know, on our financial commitments to speed as it exists. What that means for us moving forward. I appreciate that Jackie is always looking at opportunities to reintegrate students who are, have been placed out of the district. And she has a, a real strong focus on inclusion. And we have brought students back. And I like the way that that direction is going. So we'll continue that process and put students in their least restrictive environment every single time we can.
Yes.
Along with that, providing the support for the classroom teachers and, and the related service personnel at the buildings. So I think this, this is one, from an update perspective, we'll certainly keep bringing it back. I don't know that we're working on a plan to look at adding programs or things of that nature that would, we would need board direction on that because that would be a kind of departure from our current plan.
And, and the reason, and, and thank you for that answer. Cuz the, the reason I ask that is I think that previously, I know I was asking for, for a plan, like what, what are we doing, where are we going, that kind of thing. And, and looking at some of this information, it, to me, it, it seems as if, that, that might be a natural next step to look at some, I, I understand what you're saying. You need board direction, but that, what is that next step? And I don't have an answer, I'm not looking for one tonight, but.
Sure.
That would be a logical next step.
You mean to come back and say it'll cost five million dollars a year extra to do this?
Five, ten, I get you, I'm just.
Well, no, 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 I, no, I'm in. We just have to, we're not, we'll, we'll do anything. We just won't be able to do this and everything else. So if there's something else, we can walk back on.
It's not a top priority, but I don't think, I wouldn't want to let, let this fester for years.
Oh, it can't, it, it can't. We can't afford it.
So, I think, when, when's a reasonable time to take another second look at this, at, at this issue?
January?
January?
You know, so January probably gets us through maybe a certain first percentage of annual reviews planning for the following year. Those are opportunities to update programs, placements, all those different pieces. So if nothing else, we bring it back in January. We could say, okay, here's where we started, here's where we're currently at, here's, we also may have a better idea of, Jackie, and you can correct me on this, what we're anticipating.
Yes, we will.
For the following year. And so we can kind of bring our risk exposure for that piece, if that works.
Carolyn?
Yeah, that's fine. It's okay.
Does that work?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll, we'll plan on January. If we have any, you know, great information or any breakthroughs before that, of course, we'll bring it back.
Okay.
Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you. Okay, let's see where we are. Out of district.
Last discussion item.
Yep, last discussion item is the BHD consulting contract for telecom cost containment and revenue recovery.
Yeah, so this one's pretty straightforward, but it does continue with our practice of looking at our systems, looking at our programs, trying to determine whether or not we're getting the best deals, whether or not we're using our money wisely. I would say this is, you know, at least loosely connected to the salary subscription report that's down in information. Uh, that was something we started a couple of years ago, just to keep our finger on the pulse of where are we spending our money? Are all of those subscriptions still worth it? You know, do we want to keep this going into another year, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? So we had an opportunity, this was actually one of the connections I made when I visited, uh, with the Southland Chamber of Commerce. There's no cost to us. It's essentially, um, looking at our phone bills, identifying any savings, and then they split those savings with us. Uh, I mean, I usually see this in E-rate where someone will come in, hey, whatever I can save you on that E-rate, we take a certain cut of that. The district doesn't pay for it, it just kind of goes on the back end. Um, when I ran it by John, Fester the attorney, his only feedback was maybe adding a clause to the contract that we can tolerate or tolerate, terminate at any time. But other than that, he didn't see any concerns. Leonard, did you have other pieces for this?
Um, no, I, I just, I feel like it's a good service to us. I mean, certainly there, um, things that, you know, we can take a closer look at just to make sure that we're not overpaying, making sure that our rates are pretty comparable to market rates and things like that.
So a thousand years ago, when I did this work, it was, they would come in and find all of your POTS lines, your plain old tele, telephone service. And all, for all of those that they would get rid of because you had a fax machine that used to be an Office 10 that hasn't existed in ten years, you get a certain cut of that. Or they would get a certain cut. We get the savings because we're canceling things that we're not using. It's very similar. And there's no action tonight.
But I'll be, and I'll come back for action.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. The next item, items on the agenda is the, is the section of information items.
I had one question I wanted to bring forward.
Um. You go first.
Uh, staffing, I don't know what letter it is.
H?
H, yeah, I already had it open. So all the, bless you. Um, all the special ed talk had me, um, this caught my eye as I was prepping for this meeting, but now all the special ed talk had me going into this, um, section. And I wanted to touch base and I know it looks like we had interviews on a few of the positions. Have those been filled?
Uh, some of them, we are working on checking references and then we always think as soon as those references go through.
Yes. So I know the, obviously, we can't make people, um, come out of thin air that are, and we want qualified individuals, especially, um, anywhere in our district, not just a warm body. So I'm grateful that you hire quality staff. Um, and obviously, uh, at Parker, um, we're, looks, I think, what I'm guessing is down one social worker because I've, my child has had to see both. So I got that, so there's, so there's one missing there and a special education resource teacher. So there are lots of special, special education parapros and here and there. Um, obviously, I'm sure Jackie does a great job at making sure all minutes are being met and, and all of that is happening. Um, but I'm wondering, with social worker balance with special ed in that respect, especially for Parker and our beautiful middle school model, and how that is being impacted right now? Because I can't seem to wonder if a, missing a social worker at, you know, I don't even know what grade level they're missing the social worker at. Um, but, um, oh, maybe it is sixth. Yes, as my daughter told me. So, um, talk to me about that, whoever wants to grab that. And you don't even know, and maybe, so I'm, I'm just worried that, this is, how are we, here, that's the question. How are we coping with the lack of social worker, maybe that special education resource? Is that, there any impact in that way?
Yes.
Across the board?
Yes. We're robbing Peter to pay Paul. We are redirecting services, uh, from nice to haves to critical areas. We, depending on the classroom, will owe a big number of compensatory services because we're bound by law to provide those services for kids. And so, you know, I'm really kind of glad you asked about this report because it really does dovetail with the previous conversation that we had. You know, whether, whether it's data and, and I, to me, the, all of this, I, I probably could have filled this chart out with my eyes closed if Haley said, tell me the openings. The canary in the coal mine is the reading specialist. Because in my entire career, I've never gone into a school year with a reading specialist's opening because everyone has their reading specialist certificate. And when we're at the point where we have outstripped the people who are looking to leave the classroom to go be a reading specialist, there's a larger, and we're seeing it, I'm sure Carolyn can talk from her professional perspective, there's a larger issue at play with staffing because that's never been a position that's been difficult to fill, ever. And so when we think about the impacts of, you know, missing a science teacher or, you know, a special education resource teacher, we have adults in those classrooms, they're covered, but they're certainly not, you know, in some cases, a fully trained science teacher. To add another level on top of this is our, our high standards. And interviewing on October tenth, Haley's tired of me asking the question, why aren't they already working? Because unless you've moved across the country or something else major has happened, the people who we're looking to hire are already working. Met with a candidate today at some point. If everything goes well and we move forward, we're gonna have to have that conversation with that person's district about, hey, well, we're taking one of your staff members and we know that you're probably going to try to suspend his certificate. What can we do to prevent that? Because now we are in a DEFCON situation where, you know, I think, and I would say that the state kind of vacillates back and forth on whether or not they're going to enforce those, but now they're starting to enforce them again. And so we, we may hire somebody, but realistically, they're going to start at Thanksgiving because we need time for them to work through the penalty phase of wherever they're coming from. And so, um, we have pressed really, really, um, a lot of time, energy and focus on that college pipeline, getting those student teachers in, knowing what they can do and if they can do this job, making the offer before they even finish student teaching and graduate, just so that we have them locked in. Um, we're absolutely concerned about those impacts. You know, Serena Hills is missing an EL teacher. That's a big deal. We don't have very many children who have ELL needs. We don't have very many children who have ELL needs, and so the fact that we're down a staff member to service them, it may be okay at Serena, by the time those kids get to Parker, and those language issues have exacerbated, now we've got a bigger mess. And so, we, you know, at, at the heart of all of this, we want to be able to provide, you know, all of the services that we can. We walked, talked through another issue today, the one reality is that we can find a special education teacher, we can probably contract for one, it will cost probably three times the amount that we pay for a current teacher on our contract. And so, if, you know, we typically use a number of seventy thousand dollars for salary and benefits, I'll, and usually it's higher, maybe a little bit, but, you know, just as a good number, when you think about spending a quarter of a million dollars, or, you know, somewhere in that range, uh, for a position, we can absolutely do it. There is a very clear short-term limit on that, and it impacts everything from future hiring to, to having larger conversations about long-range planning. So, we spent a lot of time on staffing, as, as I think we've all been really clear, and our data would show, from a financial perspective, we're a human business, it's not, you know, different contracts or those things, it's human resources, and it's teachers and people in classrooms, and in offices, we're, you know, working with kids and parents and families, so, you know, I think we're really sensitive to it, we remain open to any and all suggestions on this topic, and I would say, in addition to the wo- work that Amabel does from an instructional perspective, I would say we probably spend as much time looking at the staffing issues that we have, and trying to be creative to come up with solutions. I, I'm not sure if you have other.
I attended an HR meeting with other directors in the area, and we all have the same positions open, so it comes down to being competitive. So, if I'm Dr. Smith, I'm going to a job fair in a couple of weeks, and I'm going to pull people to the side to summer graduates interview them, and pending references, hire them on the spot, you know, so you just have to be quick, and you have to be competitive. Other districts are recruiting retired teachers, trying to bring them back, even like going to CPS retired teachers, trying to recruit them to come down and teach, um, just anything that we can give them. Definitely getting college students in, crack to come to students, we've successfully hired some really effective teachers that were student teachers. Um, you would, you just have to be quick, and you have to think outside the box, and be more creative, instead of waiting for them to come to you, we have to go out and find them, and then word of mouth is huge.
Yeah. I would say, you know, when you look at Parker, high schools are the biggest culprit currently.
Yeah.
We can't compete with high schools, not from a salary perspective. If you can teach at Parker, for the most part, you can probably qualify to teach at a high school. And if you can walk across Governor's Highway and make another fifteen thousand dollars, it, it's hard to resist that temptation unless you really like the population that you're serving. I would say another piece of external pressure that we'll face is as district, and we're coming upon negotiations, so we'll, we'll be able to take a step here. But through that last round of negotiations, most districts did a couple of things. One, you know, there's some limit on service time that you can give, like, we can give 10 years, so if you join us from outside of the district, we can give you up to 10 years of credit, well, some districts are giving 30 years. Well, you're certainly going to get that teacher who's well, ready to move as opposed to us, because we can only give 10. The other pressure that we will face, um, as the speed co-op continues its process, we know that, you know, all co-ops, all of them, are heavily on the classified staff members. Well, when those salaries outpace our classified staff members, our paraprofessionals, you know, things, you know, one-to-one aides, those, now we'll have another issue where we're, we're looking to, to fill positions that historically come from your district, they're not really well-paid jobs. Seventy-five percent of your paraprofessionals and classified staff usually come from within your attendance boundary. I, I would say that number for us could decrease as other, until we catch up. And so, as, we're looking forward to getting through this round of negotiations, and I know that we've talked, we need to make some aggressive strides there, not only from the, on the certified side, but on the classified side as well, to make sure that we're competitive. But even things that we can talk about, like maternity leave, and, um, you know, it, anything that we can come up that will set us apart from other districts, we have to have on the table, because, um, at this point, if we don't, we know that we can't afford to outpay everybody, so we have to be a great place to work, we have to value our teachers' time, but also value them, you know, financially and, and appropriate with the market. Uh, but we have to, we have, just have to think about our human capital differently than we have in the past.
Fran. We have incredible benefits, and so I'm afraid, I mean, how do I explain to a 21-year-old how important benefits are, you know, and then it's not just about the basic salary.
True.
So, things like that.
Fran, um, this is for you, are you preparing for any and every possible scenario? Okay, just checking.
Do we, do we?
The girl who usually colors the lines is way outside.
Do we have any interest in, do we have any, like, group of paraprofessionals that have, would have an interest in getting a degree? I mean, because we have, like, every, I mean, every university has a program like that.
Yeah, we have agreement with governors, and I just spoke with less high staff, and we're about, it was going to going, um, where we reimburse a third if they come back and work with us, and then another third if they stay with us. So, we do have a partnership where they can be reimbursed.
What's the timeframe they have to stay?
I think it's four years, but I can be back to it.
And then, do we, like, I get letters all the time from people in your position saying, these are the openings, these are the benefits, this is why you should come here, and we pass it along to all of our students, and sometimes we have direct conversations when we know students that are graduating, and we know what they're looking for. I, I don't, I've never gotten one from us, so I just wonder if that is another opportunity to send to all of the universities. Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
Of course.
Okay, my question was on, um, two things, the, um, exit interviews. So the 35 responses you received were over how long of a period, like, is it, was it just over this last year?
Yeah, just over this last year.
Okay.
And then the exit survey, right after the board approves, um, their separation from us, then we send them the exit survey. And they can either just fill it out in a Google form, or they can meet with me in person or on Zoom.
So, for the 22, 23 school year, we lost 35? Wow.
Didn't everybody take that exit interview?
Most everyone either meets with me or, um, just.
Okay, my other question was on the surveys, um, that we did, do, do you have, are you gonna talk through that with?
CEC.
The commi- and then you'll come back to us?
Yeah, CEC, we're gonna bring not only the charts, but also the comments.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, and we'll bring that back to the board.
Perfect, okay.
I just wanna, didn't want to put them out.
To clarify for the 35, when you sent any staff member that leaves, so that includes custodians, classified staff, we invited everyone to take the survey, so that's not just.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions on the information items?
Yes, so, ironically, my question is on, uh, the exit survey also, so, was there anything that we gleaned from the exit interviews that we could do differently or better, so that we don't have another exodus?
Well, going into negotiations, I think the job, I think was paying grief, going around for better pay, and then, um, the second reason people left was, uh, they wanted a lighter workload, so they were either leaving the career completely, or they were looking for a different position, um, so I think always looking at things that we can take off the plate. Um, we have things that we have to have the teachers do when required, but starting with the principals, um, and admin about ways to lighten our workload if they are overwhelmed. It's a lot to teach.
Uh, I, I believe it, um, I'm gonna take your word for it. My second one was, um, directed at Fran, so, transportation. Um, I, I love how it started, and then I read it, and I was like, is this, is this really that great? So, um.
It was, and then I had to amend it.
All right.
We had a rough couple of, we had a rough couple of weeks there, and we ended up having, uh, at least a couple of drivers in the Aids for some inappropriate behaviors, they're gone now, and hopefully they're back on track again. But, um, it was a very first push, but, you know, and then, like I said, we had a couple of, it's, it's a foggy spot. But we, we move on quickly, we get tapes, we do interviews, we, you know, we talk to the principals, we're talking to the students, we're talking to the parents, and if we find that there are substantive problems, it's the same thing, or kids, we don't, we don't make respect for it.
So you, and, and without go- going all into the whole thing with Kicker, so you're, you're overall satisfied, though, with how their?
Their responses have been very good, um, honest, honestly, it really has been our student's start of since, really, since construction has been under, maybe, and one of the, 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 the.
Because from my perspective, what I, I, I don't know, maybe I'm oversimplifying, but what I understand is that one of the biggest problems that we've had is with, um, the drivers in general, and then the, the number of buses that break down or don't show, or that kind of thing, and so I saw kind of those snippets in here now, and that we haven't got to January yet, that's why I was wondering.
So, I would say, though, the number of bus pull-ups that have gone out this year has been significantly lower than it was the last several. On, and I would also say that a good number of the elementary bus pull-ups going out in the afternoon were because direct side of the back department of student behavior, and thus making the elementary runs later. Um, of course, junior high continued to work with us with, with all of that as well, um, when I have this afternoon, because of that, the back department. Um, maybe did have two bus appointments, no doubt. Um, but other than that, really, the drivers have been showing up, um, we've not, we've not had the same kind of issues that we have. We just have.
Measurably improved. Yeah, and, and again, I, and I kind of feel like we, we, we are where we are with them, and so I, I get that, and, and, but we went through a, in my opinion, a really thorough process of them saying what they were gonna do, and what we, uh, what our expectations were. That's kind of why I'm asking about that report when I saw it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, we feel good about transportation, really, you know, it, it's late, maybe Fran's underselling it, but, um, we were probably good for anywhere between four and six bus alerts per day, starting at, at least on my phone, about 5:20, 5:30 in the morning. Uh, the number of calls, and Courtney can probably weigh in on this, that we, we would take in a week, you know, even on the low end, it's, it was never less than one to three, and we haven't had that this year. And I, I know that part of it is our returning bus drivers, I know Fran's worked really hard on that. This board made a commitment during COVID, which helped us with that, and I think that's part of the benefit that we're seeing. Principals really leaning into the expectations for students, uh, training bus drivers, training the bus aides, not leaving really any stone unturned, I think has been a big piece, but all of that's, all that goes out the window if every bus is late, no one cares, you know, if you've been training people, but they've been on time, um, you know, I feel good about how they're moving through the community and picking up kids and things of that nature, you know, I feel good about where we're currently at, I know we want to improve, but I would say, just knock on wood, it's been very good.
So, so my, my last question on it is, is this, um, if I'm not mistaken, Kicker also lost some contracts in this area, so therefore they might have had, um, a greater number of personnel and a greater number of equipment available to kind of, you know, to, 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 um, supply us with. And I know we can't predict the future, but do, does this change if all of a sudden they start picking up a contract or two, you know, next year? And I'm hoping that that's something that we, you know, kind of hold our feet to the fire with, because I know that's one of the things, and again, I give you credit for that, that you kind of held them, like, this is what we're looking for.
I haven't started shaping the tree yet to see how the districts who left and what, with a couple of new companies have been doing. I know they're hanging out the nose. I don't know if they've seen anything significantly better, um, there is a South suburban business official meeting in two weeks, and you probably start asking the questions of, hey, so how's it going? And see what we get.
Make sure to tell them you hate Kicker and you're having an awful experience.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including payroll for the month of September, personnel report 24 dash 006, the speech plus contract, and the increase in the current point five FTE speech pathologist to one point O FTE, Board of Education and Executive Session Meeting Minutes, and the FOIA request.
So moved. Second.
Are there any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Leonard?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Agaral?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Leistron?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the first of the action items, and, uh, the first one is bills for the month of October.
So I reviewed the bills for the month of October and moved to approve the bills in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, four hundred and, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifteen cents.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes, sorry, I was a little low.
Rose?
Yes.
Agaral?
Yes.
Leistron?
Yes.
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 Yes, and the motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the construction management contracts with Pepper Construction?
So, second.
Any questions?
Yes, so, this contract, um, is as Fran presented, um, without any edits to, um, any of the questions that were asked earlier from, um, Joe Garz- Garzus?
Dargusus.
Joe, I was, that's the name.
It is.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Fran, are, is, is there anything in here that, um, Joe's comments about are so egregious that we need to address them?
I don't believe so. Um, my concern is, if we start getting too deep into the weeds on some of these contracting, at the end of the day, we need contractors and architects who we trust and who work with, and we need to have a good contract with them. I don't have formal training in anything construction, it's me as guys, and we need to be, we, in the engineering, we need contractors, we need the people working on, that's why we decided to go with this model. We went through an extensive RFP process, we interviewed extensively these four companies, and we were prepared to go with them. Their, their reputation, perceived them, and working with them so far have been just exemplary. Um, I know we can move, we, that it is going to change, and what the, what's in the contract is what we're talking about here in the RFP. So from that perspective, and the fact that we've also had over our, you know, our attorney going through it, as well as our insurance cooperative, and those, those brokers that we have on that end, I'm hopeful that it's, it's a good pair of contractors, and we should move forward.
Um, and thank you, my last question on it, um, and you, do you, what is your position on the, um, these gentlemen, um, staying within the realm of the, I'm gonna use the term very loosely, the, the proposed costs that they've projected?
Again, they're gonna be giving us a fee schedule to approve at every step of this process. So far, they're under what we had estimated it was going to be. So, we're gonna hold practice at every turn, every more quarter that comes through, they're gonna be giving us their, their, their fee schedule, our proposed fee schedule, have the ability to talk about it every time it comes on. So far, they're producing, and they're right where they told us they would be, which as you recall, there were those. So far, they're producing, and they're right there and told us they will be, which as you recall, they're a little bit long.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call?
Agbarah?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Lee Strong?
Yes.
Lennar?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the Wold architect fees for heating upgrades, bell tower masonry repairs, window replacements, and the Heather Hill additions?
So moved. Second.
Questions? Roll call?
Lee Strong?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Agbarah?
Yes.
Lennar?
Yes.
Chris.
Yes, and the motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the Pepper Construction fees for the summer 2024 pre-construction work?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, and again, Fran, so this is the same series of questions.
Exactly, so this, I had estimated when I, when we chose them, that this piece of the work was gonna cost us somewhere around $20,000. They're just under, they're right where they told us they would be.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call?
Nelson?
Yes.
Agbarah?
Yes.
Lee Strong?
Yes.
Lennar?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. May I have a motion to apply, may I have a motion to apply for the $50,000 school maintenance project grant?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
And again, summarize this, this grant that we're applying for again, I think it's great.
It's a free 50, free $50,000.
Great.
I object.
You object.
Put that in there, and the state is gonna give us $50,000 for it.
Okay, I want to just ask.
No, it's good, it's good.
It's right there, in the background of the.
But these are layups, we can't miss out on these.
Yeah.
Issues, and so, it's a good question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Roll call?
Rose?
Yes.
Lennar?
Yes.
Agbarah?
Yes.
Lee Strong?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes, and the motion passes.
We don't need anything for executive session.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn, that's the end of what we've got tonight.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.